Hello Craig.
I'm gonna wait till it says.
Just, John.
Good afternoon. It is Friday, September 20th. The time is one o'clock and we are ready to start our briefing meeting. The first item on the agenda is Cheerleading Action Plan. I believe we have Principal Estes and Principal Corey who will be at somewhere giving, yes, up there would be great if you don't mind. And we also have, I think, the principal of every other traditional high school in Lee County slash all the rock stars of Lee County here in our presence today. While they're making their way to the mic, I was gonna say this during my comments this afternoon, but I'm gonna say it now since she's here. I attended the homecoming pep rally at North Fort Myers High School this morning and it is one of the most favorite things I have done since I've been on the school board. That was a tremendous experience. As you know, sometimes board meetings get a little heated and it was the pep that I needed to get through this day today. It was completely student-driven. Each, each grade level, and I'm sure you guys all do this in your schools, but this is the only one I've experienced. Each grade level got up and did a powder puff thing. So guys were dancing and it was just the, the student body's reaction to each student, regardless of whether they were band or dance or football or theater, students who I would assume would be most of the powder puff people, was, it was just, it was phenomenal. And I'm surprised I can still hear. Thank you so much for the invitation and it really, really is a highlight for me in terms of my experience at this district, so you're awesome. I will turn it over to you now. Thank you.
All right. School Board members and Dr. Atkins, the high school principals group met and talked at length about cheerleading and I've prepared a letter that I'm gonna read to you so that I make sure I don't miss any points. First, we want to thank all of you for your commitment and your dedication to making sure we have appropriate, fair, and equitable systems within our district and we are grateful for all that you do, all of you sitting up there today. The high school principal group did meet on September 12th to discuss practices that are in place with regards to high school cheerleading. It was unanimously agreed that we needed to implement a universal process for safety, tryouts, and governance systems. After much debate, it was agreed that we needed to seek professionals with experience and expertise in this specific area. In the past, our district has utilized Universal Cheerleading Association for safety training. All of our cheerleading coaches are required to take this training and earn certification before they can begin coaching and in order to earn their district cheerleading supplement. It was decided that we should reach out to them for guidance and expertise. We found out that UCA does provide additional training and systems through what they call Varsity University. Additional training on systems can be added to our required safety training. This training will provide all of our coaches with fair and appropriate processes to include universal governance system and specific tryout rubrics. In addition, UCA can also provide judges to come into each of our schools to soar our try, score our tryouts utilizing their rubrics with a non-biased approach if we choose. The high school principals agreed that these systems needed to be added to our required safety training so that we can improve and align our processes so that we can be more consistent as a district. Cheerleading is an activity that has very rigorous physical activity and expectations that can affect student safety due to potential jumping, acrobatics, and stunting. It is these physical skills which can potentially categorize cheerleading from club to sport. We agreed that the fair and safe expectation of a certified UCA coach is no more than 25 students to one coach. In addition, we would like to host an annual district competition so that we are able to offer our participants more opportunity. This will help us and improve and, improve and increase our Title IX compliance, which is always challenging. This will also open doors for potential college scholarship opportunities for our students. All squads will follow the required FHSA guidelines for this process and utilize UCA to effectively organize this event. Our proposal is that our district director of athletics, Dave LaRosa, will coordinate this training and annual event to take place with our coaches utilizing Universal Cheerleading Association, which is a national organization, prior to spring tryouts. We are optimistic and confident that a universal approach, aligned systems, and training opportunities will help us to better implement a more consistent, equitable, safe, and fair process for our students and coaches. Respectfully, high school principals.
So, happy Friday, everyone. Ms. Corey's gonna come by and give everybody a handout about UCA to kinda go over a little bit about what that organization is. Just a couple of the bullets. It's, it's a Universal Cheerleading Association. It started in 1974. It's a high-quality training for the cheerleaders and the coaches. It is the largest cheerleading company in the world. It trains over 180,000 cheerleaders, 3,200 sessions across the country. Currently, it's used for our camps and our coaches' safety, uh, safety certification. So we are already working with them in some ways. But, so we propose that we add the tryout kit and governance systems to our coaches' training. We may even be able to schedule a district summer camp.
Most of our cheerleading programs are utilizing them for their summer camps now because that's where they learn all of their safety, their stunting, their jumping, and their routines. And honestly, if we can collaborate more on this utilizing our district director, we could probably save our, our students a lot of money by hosting our own camp here locally rather than traveling. So it would be a cost savings as well. Can we entertain any questions for you guys? Yes ma'am.
How does this proposal compare to, I understand there was another one that was presented. How, how is it different?
Well, I can respond to that. We, we did review that and we looked at all of the details and we just could not come to an agreement to support that.
Okay, and are there any specifics that you really did not?
Some, some of the specifics I could speak to directly would be that we have over 100 different clubs, sports, and activities in our schools. Just speaking randomly, we have five, over five dance clubs at my school individually where we have tryouts for that club. A lot of these clubs aren't as physical that require the throwing girls up in the air with all the stunting, the liability that goes into that, the jumping and the acrobatics. FHSA does offer it as a sport if they do compete and we would like to choose to give our students that opportunity rather than take that opportunity away. So, and with that liability and all that's involved with the supervision for the safety of that, that's why we also came up with a ratio of 25 to one for the coach to be appropriate for safe expectations. And when you go to the UCA site, they also share on the website, which you guys, I've listed the site there for you, you can look around on there. They also mentioned some of the ratios that they think are a reasonable expectation for safety.
That are safe. So are you saying then with this proposal, um, that rather than it just being some type of a club, that you, that there would be levels that, you know, the cheerleaders could go to and then be involved in this, in the UCA? Or is UCA gonna be an integral part of the whole process?
So I, to think, I think I'm understanding what you're saying. We would still have our leveled squads for the grade levels and such, but we would still have tryouts for this, but that doesn't mean that we wouldn't have our other club opportunities for our students to participate in supporting the excitement of school events. I know several different schools have several different pep organizations where students can also get involved to cheer on their school and support that environment. Our school, we have the jump around crew, they have shirts. Gosh, everybody knows the Wave Cave Wackos. Each school has a different type of group that is for pep and school spirit to bring up that level of enthusiasm at the school that all students can get involved in.
And, and as it's presented to the students, it could be in those levels?
Yes ma'am.
If you wanna get way up to the physical side, you can do this.
Right.
Or this squad is this and this squad is this. And would they try out for each of those?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's what, where we wanna try to be equitable in our tryouts. I mean, cheerleading can be challenging if we don't have really good, clear, precise systems, rubrics, fair systems, equitable systems. And that's why we wanna utilize Universal Cheerleading Association because they've been supporting schools throughout this country since 1974. They have quite a bit of experience in it and they're able to offer that expertise so that we can be more consistent as a district using those processes so that we are fair and equitable for our students. And we wanna tighten that up as a team, as a district.
Okay, my last question is, in the process that you developed, what input did you get from parents?
Please, yes.
There have to be next steps. So our next steps include creating a mechanism where we can get input from parents, we can get some input from students and structures because what ends up happening in so many cases that you hear from the, what could be the vocal minority. So we do look at this as, we wanted to give a construct today, a conceptual plan, uh, that's based on an organization that goes beyond any of ours' expertise and bringing that organization in to this structure allows to have a plan that we can go forward.
And the next plan that you bring to us would be a little more specific as to how to get into this and how to do that? I mean, will it be a, a process?
It will be, what I don't want to say is this, and this is one of the things that is a challenge as a, you know, as a high school principal, as administration, that we have to also be cautious of over-promising. Because sometimes when you put too much there, then it allows it to be attacked and then we end up continually to spin our wheels. But we're looking more of having structures in place to gain input. And then utilize the, 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 the structures that you, that Universal Cheerleading Association has so that we can have something that's at least sound.
Right.
That's, that has, that's equitable as possible. But one of the things we have to also understand is that no matter what we put in place, there will always be something that can be attacked, you know?
Murphy's Law.
Yes, absolutely.
The, the only reason I ask about the parents too, because getting their buy-in to what you wanna do is going to help the success of what you do.
I agree with that, but by the same token, we also know that there will always be something.
And we know that.
Yeah.
But the majority of parents, I think.
Yes, yes.
Would listen and understand the process and be able to help their children. But thank you for all that you all have done.
So, I'm glad that we're gonna have something that's gonna be fair, equitable, and consistent across the district. I think that's really important for us. So, help me to understand this now. If we are using UCA for training and, and as a universal process, does that mean that now cheerleading will be a coat, a sport at every high school? And did I understand?
I can speak to that. So when you look at, there is always forever and ever going to be a debate over whether or not cheerleading is a sport. And the FHSA, the way they define is, is if it's going to be called a sport, is if they actively participate in a competitive element. And we're saying that we do wanna offer our stu, if you've ever been to a Friday night football game, you will always see them at halftime. They go down by the scoreboard and they do their do that, do that cheer and they dance and have, they love interacting. They love it when they get to go to camp and interact. And we do all go to the camps. We're looking to bring them together to do more activities together. So we're saying at the very minimum, as hard as these girls work, we wanna give them an opportunity once a year to come together and have our own county competition where they get to showcase all the work that they've done for the season. And there are scholarships on the table that are out there when it's taken to this athletic level. Now that's what we're saying we would like to do as a minimum to give our students more opportunity to take us, to give more Title IX opportunities as well. However, some schools will be, you know, Riverdale has had a competitive program forever. We don't also wanna hinder that because they have community support and parents that have worked hard and that's what they do at that school. So we're saying at the minimum, we wanna offer this opportunity where we showcase their talents, but yet if they want to go further beyond that, then they will utilize the FHSA guidelines and they do have those systems through the state that they will continue to follow and participate on if they choose to go further. But we wanna provide at least this opportunity for our kids and they are really gonna love getting to showcase their skills because they work so hard all year long, peppin' everybody else up like you talked about at that pep rally and showcasing other athletes and now they're gonna get the time to shine where we get to pull together a district event and they can showcase what they did that year.
So then what you were saying is that at, at each and every school, we're gonna have a consistent practice for tryouts?
Yes ma'am.
For this?
Yes.
Whether or not it's a sport or a club? And that there will be other opportunities, if I understood you correctly, for kids to do other types of cheering and?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And honestly, just to be candid, that's also gonna depend on sponsor availability, student interest, uh, cause if you can go through the different organizations, like for instance, at Dunbar High School, we have an active math team. However, some schools, they may have one, but it's not quite as active.
Right.
So those, some of those things happen. The thought is that if you have an initial competition, it may create some momentum in certain schools, but then in other schools, it, it may not.
Right. Yeah, at our school, it, it is really, really hard because we're a center for the arts and a lot of our cheerleaders, they're involved in dance and theater and, and for us, we would love to, we've tried to get organized to go further. We just haven't been able to because the students haven't shown the interest to do so. Whereas another school, it's everything to them and they don't want to not do that. But, so we wanna at least provide that one opportunity where we get to come together as a district, but yet give them opportunity to go further if they are organized and they have the parental support and community support to do so.
Right. And, and, and thank you for that, for giving them that equitable opportunity.
Yes ma'am.
Other board comments or questions?
Ms. Jevonelli?
So, one of my questions, everybody goes to the UCA camp or all, all the schools participate in the UCA camp. Is that correct?
No, not necessarily. They all have to, every coach, I'll let you answer it, the judge.
So there really are only two cheerleading camps that, you know, cheerleading has changed over the last 20 years so drastically mainly due to injury. So the two major organizations that you can get cheerleading camp through is UCA or NCA and they're all under the umbrella of varsity. So, some of us travel to camps because they have them away at sites like at Florida State, but it's very expensive for our kids. And then other schools bring them into their cafeteria and they work with all three of their squads and then sometimes we're able to get together and share in the cost. It would be nice if we can work together since we're trying to collaborate more and maybe even, when they get to go away to camp, it's so much fun because then there's like 15 teams there.
Yeah.
And they get to engage with each other and that's where the true learning and the fun is created for our students. And they have more auditions for opportunities and scholarships too. So by partnering with UCA, we can align our systems, train our coaches, get fair rubric consistent processes for tryouts with nationally norm language, governance systems that are appropriate, that have been vetted by the Universal Cheerleading Association. And then probably also, we gotta have discussion because we're very early into this, we might even be able to organize a district camp that is so much cheaper for our girls, but yet creating what these big, faraway camps create because we come together. So, yes, some, I would probably say 80% of us use UCA. Some of them might use NCA to learn material. It all comes down to, they're getting training around dances and cheers and things that they need to learn that's material that they have for the year.
Okay, so then, okay, so then, uh, spirit clubs. Some schools have spirit clubs, right?
Yes.
Like how many? That's what I was curious, out of the high schools. So, we got one, two, three, four? Okay, so I would encourage more of that maybe, you know what I mean? That, that gives that outlet, that additional, all schools need the spirit.
Absolutely.
So, you know? We love our schools, so. The other thing that I wanted to make sure this, that was in part of this being universal is the contracts that each girl signs as, you know, once they join the team or, you know, are on the team. Will that be uniform and all similar throughout all the high schools so that everybody is on the same page and the same commitment?
That's what we're proposing, yeah. So typically, it's called a cheerleading constitution.
Okay, thank you.
UCA calls in a governance system.
Okay.
And they already have that created and that's why we, we're saying, we wanna bring our coaches together when they do their safety training and we wanna do this before spring tryouts. We wanna teach them proper rubrics that we're gonna use as a districts for tryouts. We wanna give them the safety training so that our students are not at risk and we're not at risk liability-wise. And we want to be trained in their governance system. So we're using a consistent district process for monitoring, supporting our girls.
That's awesome because that's really important.
Yes.
Because I think that, um, the contracts just need to be, you know, really tightened up.
Yes ma'am.
A little bit.
I understand.
And so I think that, and if, as long as the coaches are guided and given the training and the means to be successful for, you know, all parties and, then that's really what's important because it's, then it's all, you know, everybody's on the same page and working together for the same common goal.
Exactly.
Um, I think that is all I had. Oh, I know, I had one other question. So this is, um, Dr. Bohatch's proposal? This was his proposal?
No.
Oh, this is not?
We, we came together as a group. This is our proposal as a high school principal group.
And I will say that we heard and at the end about Dr. Bohatch's proposal, but we were not involved in that process at all.
Okay, okay. And was students involved? Any, any cheer students had a, a voice in this besides, since parents weren't, any students at all? No?
No, not yet.
Not at this time.
And what, as, as I said earlier, this is the initial concept. What we envision seeing, because we run into a time crunch and we want to make sure we have something to present.
Okay.
But we see that involving parents as well as students in this process, cause, cause there are other things that have to be vetted and designed. And so that, so we do see that as part of the process. Yes.
I think what I'm hearing, a lot of you have asked that question and I don't think that's unreasonable to ask and what we can do, working with Dave LaRosa, we can bring our cheerleading coaches together with UCA. We could probably get a student representative and a parent representative. That's not too large of a group.
Right.
And we can come together and review this information with UCA's guidance and then tweak it with them when we do this potential workshop. We could do something like that that would, I think, get what you're looking for, to have that parental approach and the student approach and vetted. That way we have all the high schools working together and arrive before we do, okay, this is where, what we're gonna do together, but we need more time.
And one of the things that we talked about, we wanted to avoid because we felt like we needed to be deliberate. First, we wanted to bring forward what we thought was a, and we reconsidered that this was a, a strong concept to start with and building, building a foundation. But if we, if we were to rush and began to put things out before we had a chance to really flush it out, that's what gets us in trouble in other situations and, and creates more of an unrest. So, I think we need to continue to be, we're deliberate with it, we're gonna continue to, but bringing in this, this is something we could, we could agree on. This is a neutral, well-informed organization that could be the guiding post for us so that we can move forward. Because quite frankly, I'm ready to also focus, could make sure I'm focusing also on my teacher there learning. This is important, but there are other things, so, but this is the way we wanted to, to start.
So, um, I know that some of the, there's assistant coaches and some coaches that are alumni cheerleaders, you know, or that are coaching now, cheerleading. So it would be interesting to get maybe their, maybe they could get their input or have their involvement because they're, they're down the line, they've been out of, they've graduated from college and so you'd have that little bit without actually getting the cheerleading, cheerleaders' opinion that's in school right now.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? And I know there's several that have, that are utilizing retired cheerleaders as their coaches now and which is, I think, is a great thing. So, cause that keeps, we're bringing back our, you know, our alumni and, and keeping them involved, that, that, that tradition will continue through the, out there community. So I think that's a great thing. So I just thought maybe utilizing their opinions in, in your process.
A lot of our coaches are actually alumni cheerleaders from this district.
And actually, I will tell you this, is that one of the things that, that was very critical in this collective group, I wasn't picked for a cheerleading squad when I was in high school. However, we have some former cheerleading, high school cheerleading coaches. And so as a result, that, that, that's where the, Ms. Corey was a cheerleader, so that's when the cheerleading coach, that was when the idea was spawned, but let's bring in UCA. Because if we rely only on our own resources, we're obviously gonna, and we may still miss something, but at least it gives us something credible that we can set our feet down on.
Did I just hear you say you weren't?
I wasn't.
I wasn't either. I was, I was in band, so I'm.
I was in band, I was a band person.
I'm with you. So, but I had a daughter that was a cheerleader. So I respect the UCA, they're awesome. So, and I think going with their guidelines and their rules and, and then putting that out to all the high schools is spot on. It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, the only thing I agree with, I love the fact that we would be using someone for all the schools, but I don't know if I'm okay. Do you have input by your football players and your baseball players and every other sport that you do, whether to help you with the guidelines and the rules?
Well, what I would say is that there, you know, I'll use some other organizations and, and just being quite frank, we have to come up with something that's defensible. So like for instance, whether it's National Honor Society, whether it's other organizations, sometimes you do bring in some neutral, well-intended piece. I, with where we are at this point in time today, I think it's important for us to be able to move forward, to have something that's credible that we can, and that's what we talked about as a group.
And I, I agree, I believe you.
You know, I don't disagree with you, but.
And the judges, if we have the same, you know, you have five judges across the district, that should be solve that issue in itself, right there. And then, I guess the only other thing I would say is that some of the schools, and I know I had looked at, not picking on Fort Myers because my grandson goes there, but the, some of the verbiage in certain areas contradict themselves. So I would just say we would definitely need to look at that, whether it's a club or a sport, and just make sure that they're all consistent. So that way, no one can say on this page it says this and this page it.
I think, I think what you'll find is those of us that elect to go club versus the Florida High School Athletic Association route would have all of the same documentation. It's very much in the spirit of like the academic plans or the curriculum map so that the experience isn't drastically different at one school or the next. You know, we're on the same page, we're following the same sequence of events and, and we're consulting the guidelines of UCA, which knows far more about this sort of thing than, than we do. But that, that, that fairness, that equity, that, that similarities from school to school to school, I, I think is very important.
Just out of curiosity, do we have male cheerleaders in this district?
Absolutely.
All schools?
I do.
Not all schools. I've had them in the past, but.
Now, I, wow, that was in another era.
Yeah, but I, no, we've, I know we've had them in the past. It just depends who tries out. And some schools have them more regularly than others.
I was a coach at Cypress Lake and I had 10 boys on my squad on average. That way we were able to go into the co-ed division. It was a little easier, it was fun.
And does that, does that make a difference?
It does. If you're gonna compete.
In terms of the competition?
Oh, yes.
If you have male cheerleaders?
Different divisions.
You know, I don't, my girl, I was not a cheerleader. My girls were not cheerleaders.
They didn't have to do splits.
There's a lot of scholarship opportunities for male cheerleaders.
Well, yeah, there's some places, like Texas A&amp;M, they, that's all they, well. Well, yeah, there's some places, like Texas A&amp;M, that's all they, well, but, yeah, I would imagine that there were. So, no, I was just curious, because frankly, I'm not a big spectator sport person either, can I say? So, I was just curious. But, yeah, I'm really glad that males and females, because often, I think, when you think of the girls and, and as Jordan said, it's kind of like cheerleader moms, dance moms. I mean, that's a thing. So, to keep them out of giving their input would be like, I don't know, like stopping a stampede of cantaloupes or something. I was just curious.
Other questions, comments? So, cost, have we talked about?
I tried to reach out to UCA to get some details on this. A lot of the cost involved with safety training and things like that, if we do cheerleading camp with them, is included. So, I think what the proper thing to do at this point would be for our district athletic director, over all of our athletic programs, to investigate and engage at this point with UCA, to talk about what kind of cost savings they could give us if we came together and did our camps together and hosted it locally, and what would they be, be able to contribute with a training package that would support us with our safety training, governance system, and tryout materials prior to the spring tryout. So, that's really the next step of where we are. I tried to get it for you quickly. They just, I wasn't able to get answers that quick for you.
So, I hear that Principal Cook has competitive cheer at Riverdale. Does that mean you're, that's FHSA sanctioned?
Mm-hmm.
So, we currently have the option to do that. We don't need UCA in order to do that. We could, that is a school-by-school determination.
Yep.
As we stand today.
Yep.
Okay, so, I guess my real concern here is that this feels very micromanaging for a board to be involved in cheer at high schools. I don't think we should be approving this. I don't think we should be having this conversation with you. I do think that, that it opens the door to a parent complaining that his child or her child didn't make the basketball team, and then we find ourselves here having this conversation about basketball, and then having this conversation about chess club, and having this conversation because my daughter didn't make the starting squad on the math team. You know what I mean? Like, I feel like, I feel inappropriate sitting here having this conversation with you. So, I would like to, to think that, that we can do this in the future without board involvement. Because we're making suggestions that you get parents involved, and we get students involved. Are your parents and students involved in tryouts for basketball? Are they involved in tryouts for, for any of your clubs? Like, I know that we have clubs at middle schools, and we don't have parents involved in that process either. We don't have students involved in that process. This is my personal opinion. I'm uncomfortable sitting here having this conversation. And the last, the last thing that I will offer is that I believe that, that a really great way to come in compliance with Title IX is girls' flag football. And it's super cheap, and I had to get that plug in at the end of my comments.
Great job, Coach.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think the things that were said about were parents involved, were students involved, I heard them as more as questions and maybe suggestions than micromanaging. And as far as micromanaging, I think this is a very important discussion for us to have as a board, because I know one thing as a board member that I've been concerned with, and this is in, in general, is some standardization. That said, I realize that each school has its own culture, and each school has its own population, and, and things have to be tuned in to what is happening at their particular school. However, when you have far-reaching things, because cheerleading is, it's a class, isn't it, as well? You don't have it as a class?
No.
Okay.
It's after-school activity.
After-school.
School.
Oh, in Texas, they have all that. I guess I hadn't paid attention to what Florida does, but, but it is an important part of the school culture and, and what's done at the school. And, and I think when we don't have some of the big things that have become issues as standardized, leaving room for the cultural differences, I, I think that's what gets us into some, some difficulties as, as a board, dealing with, well, at this school they do that, no, that's not right. I mean, let's just standardize some of the big things. And anyway, that's my opinion on it.
Ms. Fisher?
So, I'm just going to add one more comment. Over the past five years, I've had the opportunity to attend almost every meeting of our Student Advisory Committee. And one of the things that we have heard, and not regarding cheerleading per se, but regarding code of conduct and access to sports and equity, is that the kids suggested that they have a need for consistency across the district as they move from school to school. And certainly, every school has its own personality and culture, and, and that's what makes it great. And I think that when we look at a district this size, and we look at this day and age with social media, and we look at the fact that our kids are living the issue, and they, they are very articulate about identifying concerns and, and providing suggestions for solutions, and they've really helped us with a lot along those lines. So, I'm happy and thank you guys for doing this, because I think this gives us that level of consistency. And then, when people from the public do reach out to us as the people who are responsible for oversight in this district, we have a consistent answer. And so, thank you.
Dr. Atkins, did I see your, you wanted to, no. All right, any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to, I just want to agree with Mary as well, and I wanted to thank all the principals that came out here today to support the endeavor, because I under, because, I mean, it's great that you're here. That's, it shows the importance of that for you as well. So, thank, no, thank you for coming, really, a lot, so.
We good? Thank you very much. Have a wonderful weekend. Go all of your schools in football tonight. I hope you all win.
Against each other.
Go Cypress.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is strategic plan update. And we have Ms. McClung.
Ms. Patrick, may I make a comment? I, I'm on my phone because I have a personal issue that's going, yeah, I just didn't want it to seem like I'm being...
I wouldn't have even questioned it.
Well, I usually don't like to have my phone up here.
As far as the action meetings concerned, we have, we do have a, a protocol that allows it during workshop and briefing, but not action. And I remember one time I needed it during an action meeting, and I, yeah.
Are we, are we good to go?
Yes, ma'am. As soon as I turn this, because I can't call my children. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, thank you for the opportunity today to spend some time talking with you about our strategic plan. We're going to start with our last year's plan and some results from that, and then we'll talk about our update for this year's plan. So, I believe all of you have seen those two documents. In the interest of time, I'm going straight to the documents. So, we'll do a real quick review, because I know you have had a chance to see those. If you have any questions about them, I will be happy to answer that, and then we'll move on to our update. So, we'll start with envisioned 2030 goals from FY19. We did make progress as a district, and we're really proud of the progress that's been made. When you look through that, I know there were times when, when I looked at it and said, oh, we, we didn't quite reach that goal. But we made progress, and that's what we're really looking forward to. We set pretty aggressive goals, particularly this coming year, you'll see some even more aggressive goals, because we are determined to be a world-class school system. So, as we go through those, you can see with our pre-K students, we began looking at that last year. It's a little different with pre-K results, because most of our data we get at the end of the year. So, we have some sort of lagging data. Our students are taught all year long, and then we're looking at FY19 results at the end of FY19. With the readiness score, we're actually measuring pre-K performance. We have very few pre-K students, around 2,000 pre-K students that are actually part of our district programs. So, a lot of the students who come in for pre-K are from community groups or have not had any pre-kindergarten experience at all. So, as you can see, when we first started looking at that in FY18, about 43% of our students came in ready for kindergarten. That actually dropped last year. So, this has jumped to one of our top priorities this year, because we know as a, not just as a school district, but as a community, how important it is for our students to have that background knowledge in order to be successful. We know that students who have that pre-K background are more successful, not only in kindergarten, but all the way through post-secondary education.
And just to again, highlight that particular goal, as, as Ms. McClung had mentioned, you know, when, when Dr. Savage looked at this data, I think it just bears repeating that, you know, our kindergarten readiness in Lee County is one of the lowest across the state of Florida. And there were only, in his studies, six districts, and they were small rural districts, that had lower kindergarten readiness than did our school district. This is something that is typically not a large district function, but I think in Lee County, with lack of, of quality pre-kindergarten experiences and obstacles to those experiences, such as cost of programs, that, that the community needs to do something, and we, we need to continue to work on partnering with the community. We do have a partnership with Future Lee that we hope we can kick into high gear this year. I know that we have a meeting, kind of a planning meeting coming up on Monday, and then we have a further meeting with Future Lee. So, we try to get, take, literally take these to the next level. This is also something that we talked about in our NAACP community forums, and something that we're talking about with the NAACP, because, again, access to quality pre-K should be a goal for, for all of our children. That is certainly Future Lee's goal, and I think it should be really Lee County's goal. So, we hope to really spend a lot of time this year making substantial progress on this goal, not incremental progress.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, I think I sent out to everybody a Tampa News report about attention being paid in the legislature for this. So, I'm thinking that particularly given your conversation with Future Lee, we really need to try to put together a one-page thing for our delegation that Carol Green can hand out, even if she can't talk to it. She needs to understand, you know, what our situation is here, what the impediments are, et cetera, because this is, this is, this is a real problem.
We'll make, we'll make that happen.
Thank you. So, moving on...
Hold on one second, please. Ms. Vaughn.
Oh. Since we're talking about lawmakers outside of the school district, this is also something that I think needs to be addressed with our county commissioners, because there have been, you know, several years ago, there was the Children's, the Children's Council that, that was brought up, and it didn't even make it to the ballot. And, you know, if we look at, at some of these programs that some of the other counties have that we don't have, it certainly, I mean, yeah, it would be their, their thing, but we should all be cooperating, and it would be good for them to be partners with us on something like that, and, and vice versa, to have, you know, the, the different children's councils that they have in other counties in Florida have done, I've seen lots of, lots of presentations, and it helps exactly in, in that area as well, having healthy young children and having, you know, educating the parents and all of that.
Help me, help me with the name of the group. I did meet relatively, oh, I'd say maybe about six months ago with a group that does the Nehemiah event, and...
The Coalition?
The...
Pennies?
Yeah, it's...
Pennies for Progress.
Well, the pennies, they're, what, what they want to do is support the Pennies for Progress group that puts, that puts forth the Children's Council. So, that's the Coalition of, of local churches that comes together every year, and they pick one community issue to deal with, and, and this is the issue that they have chosen for this upcoming year. They invited me to speak, or to come just talk about what I felt as a superintendent the greatest needs of the school district. So, I went to Mount Hermon and, and had that discussion with them. And then, what they asked for my support in was just to support them in their efforts relative to the development of the Children's Council. So, I did indicate to that group. Now, we haven't heard, I know they had their event, and, and moving forward, I haven't heard anything beyond that, but maybe we can reach back out again and see where they are in their efforts. But I can tell you that, that I told them I would be supportive if they needed my help.
Ms. Fisher?
So, yeah, so, Dr. Atkins, at your recent meeting for Future Lee, was there any mention of the Children's Services Council or moving forward with that?
I don't recall any specific meeting or, any discussion relative to the Children's Council. Most of the discussion that I recall was focusing on trying to create a, a pre-K to 20, you know...
Continuum.
Continuum. And with the initial focus being on working on the, the pre-kindergarten portion of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Jevonoff?
That's the Lee Interface Empowerment Group.
Yes, life group.
Ms. Jevonoff?
And Dr. Quisenberry was involved in the Pennies. I know, so maybe she would have a, a little more update, and I thought maybe we could get the data from, I think it's, is it St. Lucie County that has?
St. Lucy was the one. And I know Ms. Morgan went as, as well when that group first, first started up, but, yes.
So, now, I think they've...
Dr. Quisenberry was very involved with it.
Yes.
But just to see, I mean, it made, just that one presentation several years ago from the person who ran the council in St. Lucies County, it was so impressive, because it doesn't just hit the kids when they're three years old, they actually go into the homes after prenatal and postnatal. And so, you know that a lot of the difficulty with our kids that don't have kindergarten readiness is they, they may not have had the proper nutrition. Their brain expands, I mean, grows in those first three years. And so, that's why, to me, it's so important for the district and, and the county to somehow forge a partnership and realize that it's mutually beneficial so that we can move forward with, with this and have those kiddos come in, you know, ready.
So, that's what I was starting to say, is if we could get the, the data from Fort St. Lucie now, they've had a couple of years, and, and see their numbers compared to ours, even, and I think that would help the vision.
Sure, we can definitely reach out and do that. And I know that we have, have even talked about partnering with Lee Health, because we can get them not just in the home, but before they even get home.
Right, right.
So, getting that information to brand-new parents who really don't know who to reach out to and how to begin.
One of, one of the things that we will do in addition to that is, I know, again, and Dr. Savage, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if I, if there's anything else you want to add to what I'm about to say, one of the things that he's been able to do is he, with looking at the statewide data, is being able to determine where are the districts that have really done a good job with this. And I recall Pinellas County was the one that really had increased their pre-K readiness over, over a relatively short period of time. And then, as a result of that, it turns in and boosts their, their student data in, in elementary, and eventually that works up to middle school and high school. So, you know, looking at a district like Pinellas, what have they done to, because they didn't start there, but now they have one of the highest kindergarten readinesses in the state. So, what did they do to get there or something? We can also examine.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
Oh, I thought you had your hand up.
No, didn't.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, Ms. Vaughn.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay. The data that you have on our early childhood, do we have, where can we find that broken down, a deeper dive into it by zones, by areas, and that type of?
We can actually provide, the NAACP just, we just put that together yesterday. We can get you what we gave them today. So, that has it broken down, I believe, by zone.
Okay.
Or at least by, I believe, area of the county. Or at least by, I believe, area of the county.
Thank you. Just to reiterate what Dr. Atkins said, the, the data, of course, is lag data, so it's the pre-K data from last year, well, when this data from this current year comes out, we'd have that. That is available. We can, we can aggregate that by school. Right now, the most recent piece, we did by race, so that we could see that piece as well, but we could do it by school. It would take a little more work to do it by zone, to classify those schools by zone, but it could all be done by that type of distribution.
Can you give us a little feedback on the, the race data?
I, I did provide a summary that was sent. I can see if I can just pull it up in my email.
Maybe it's something, you, you got it coming.
Thank you.
And we also have...
What a team.
Thank you.
A huge number of non-English speakers that come into, often come into kindergarten, monolingual.
Right. Now, now unfortunately, in this, the way this data is organized, it doesn't denote that particular piece, but it does, it is done by race is one of the criteria that they do, as well as the school location. So, that would be something that would be a little bit more difficult to do. We do have some internal data within the district when it's put into our internal system that we, that does bring in additional classifications and whatnot, but in terms of the data, the way it's transmitted to the state, that's not one of the criteria in that particular file. As far as the, the racial breakdown, would you just like the percent of students who are kindergarten-ready by the racial groups coded in that form? So, for American, Indian, or Alaskan native, 43% kindergarten-ready. Bear in mind, this is contrasted with the 40% overall district kindergarten-ready. Asian...
You're going to send this to us, right?
Pardon, yes, this was, this was already compiled, it's probably going in your board update, would I imagine.
As long as it's, it's in there, okay.
Asian or Pacific Islander was 47% kindergarten-ready district-wide. For our black ethnicity group, 31% kindergarten-ready. Our Hispanic ethnicity group, 27% kindergarten-ready. Mixed race, 39% kindergarten-ready. And the white ethnicity group, 56% kindergarten-ready. You'll have all of that in your file.
Board update.
In the board update, that's great.
And, and like I said, this, this was a question that literally came from the forum that we just had, and then we did have our quarterly meeting with the NAACP yesterday, so we were able to provide that as answering the questions that actually came up at the Franklin Park Forum.
How are we looking at, I mean, looking at this data and formulating the next steps?
Well, that is a good question. I, I certainly am not prepared to fully summarize the entire district response. I think the first step is acknowledging, this is not new data.
Right.
And, and the trend is troubling as a district. You know, we, we have certainly have always had interest in K-12, but this trend, it was very important that as we hear about the challenges from our schools, that we also understand that it begins before they even come into our schools, and it is a community-wide issue. So, comprehensively as a community, what is our school district doing? But I've already heard from board members, and it's certainly been our discussions in the meetings we've been in, is how do we tackle this as an entire community? Have a sense of urgency so as a community, we're one voice. So, I think any strategy we have will also be tethered to a, a community response as well.
Definitely, okay.
Okay, so I just want to touch base with the board before we move on. We're already, I want to say, 15 minutes into a 45-minute presentation, and we are at the top of page one. So, if we can sort of keep that in mind with our interactions with staff, and also, I beg your indulgence if we go long. Is that fair? Do I have thumbs up on that? Dr. Atkins, is that acceptable to you and your staff?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, I think, this is a briefing. So, if, if we want to have a conversation like we've just had, I really think we need to tape, put some of this stuff aside and ask for a workshop and time to really dig, so, okay.
Thank you. Not, not to, I mean, appreciate the information for sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
And as we go further with the kindergarten plan, I think a workshop would be very appropriate in a couple of months, when we've had time to really dig into it. Thank you. So, moving forward with the next piece is all about proficiency, and you may recall last year, we, we changed our format a little bit, because we really wanted to focus on what is it our students are able to do. And we want them to be proficient, we want them to be able to read and write and, and know about science and be good citizens. So, those next ones were to do with proficiency, and also our ranking within the 10 largest districts within the state in terms of proficiency. The good news is that we are getting better. The good news for other kids, but not necessarily for our rankings, is that the other districts are also getting better. So, it's getting tougher, you know, to move up in the rankings, even though we're making progress. So, as you noticed probably in, in this year's update, we've made some, some changes to our targets, because we really do want to move up in those rankings as well as in proficiency. Are there any questions around any of those proficiency results?
And just, just one of the comments, again, that the reason why we had brought, I'd asked Dr. Savage to look at some of this information was just identifying some challenges that are unique in Lee County, as we watch what other districts are doing and, and working on our proficiency and trying to move up our ranking. One of the things that raises a bar in Lee County is that we have, in terms of the 40 largest districts are economic, in, in economic numbers, in terms of the economic risk of our students, we're at the lowest of those 40 largest districts. I already mentioned the, the kindergarten readiness. The other challenge that's unique to us is the ELL population is increasing, the last five years at a faster rate than any district in the state of Florida. And last year, we added 1,697 students, ELL students, to our overall population, and this year, it appears to be the same. So, these are, are challenges that if you have a more established district, such as Miami Dade as an example, you know, their population doesn't, doesn't fluctuate as much as ours. The stability rate, I think, is the last one, and Ken, I can't remember the exact figure on the stability, but one of the lowest stability rates in the state of Florida, and that means that we have a high degree of student mobility within our county. Fourth, fourth lowest stability rate. And that's, that's a struggle for our, that's a struggle. You'll hear if you, I know a lot of you go out to schools, and you'll talk to school principals, and they can talk to you about the movement in and the movement out. That's also something that with our student assignment PLC, we are looking to do, if we, if there are ways that we can limit some of this, like one of the requests that just came to me from tier-three principals, is can we limit the movement among our schools if you're like, if you live within a zone, like, let's say, the east zone? Can we limit that to one move per level per year? In other words, you know, because I was talking to Melissa Robery, and she has students that have literally spent every year in a different high school, and it, it makes it very challenging, you know, when you, when they do not have that stability. So, if we can look at our own processes and see what we can do, I know that choice is important, but also, a lot of times, those issues that a student have, has, you, you often take those with you, and so, sometimes a fresh start is good, but often having staff that's knowledgeable about, about a particular student's challenge is, is even more important.
Dr. Atkins, didn't you tell us once, or I think I remember somewhere in the recess of my brain, you telling me that students that we have from K through 12, those numbers are great, but it's the students that come in and out of our district where we see these challenges?
Yes. Example would be, probably the greatest example would be our, if you look at 10th graders, so if you look at 10th grade numbers, students that take EL, the English Language Arts Test, a 10th grader that has been in the school district of Lee County for five or more years versus a student that is brand-new to our school district, taking the first time, the student that's been in our school district five or more years, literally outperforms, doubles the performance of a student, it's like 60% versus 30%, you know, doubles the proficiency rate of a student that's new.
Great. Ms. Gittens.
Just listening to what you were just saying, though, and I think what Cindy Enam said earlier, it's, it's about the whole community, because the socioeconomics is what drives the fact that we have children moving around. It's, that's just it. I mean, the parents, if they do not have the, the finance to stay in one place, and they have to move to another place, or they now go and live with grandma or auntie, it's, it's something that we, we cannot control, and it's something that we need to look at, though. How, how do we deal with it, because we can't change it? And I know you had talked before about, you know, having that good communication piece, that you have all of the records and all of the data about that child that goes with them. We've also heard in the past of parents that do move their children, and there's a lag time. I don't know how we're doing on that now, because that did create an issue for parents with a child sitting in a classroom for a few weeks waiting for this information, and they've already placed them in a class, and they get their data and find out they need to be somewhere else. So, I think that part is our side, the, the socioeconomic piece is our community and working together to figure that piece out.
But just a, a couple of things to respond, and yes, Madam Chair, you are, are correct in terms of the, the economic factors that drive some of these changes in location and where the folks live. One of the things that, if you do move within a particular zone and stay within the same zone, trying to be a little bit more flexible in keeping a student in a school with how we provide transportation, so that they can stay, maintain in a school within that zone. The challenge, obviously, is if you have moving from one zone to another. Something that we do to try to improve consistency, as, as you are all aware, is our academic plans. That is, that I think is certainly helping us, so that a student moves from one location to another, that, and taking a particular course, if they're in biology, then they're going to be at about the same spot in biology at the, at the new school as they were at the prior school. So, those are just some things that we're doing to try to improve that. And then finally, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, in terms of, one of the requirements now statewide in terms of student records, is a three-day turnaround. That is a, that is a challenge, but we're, we have to meet that challenge, that is a law. So, that, that really, I think, does, for the student's sake, does improve getting those records to the school in a timely manner, and making sure that, that they have, you know, data like IEPs, et cetera, so they, they have the information they need to serve the students' needs.
Great. Ms. McClung.
The next one was graduation rate, which in its own way is also about proficiency. That data should be available in December. Going to keep scrolling, if you have a question, please just jump in. We also made some progress in decreasing the achievement gaps between our student groups, so we were very excited about that. Again, we have some work to do there, but we are making progress. Out-of-school suspensions, we, we were not particularly pleased with that, as you can imagine. However, when you look at the breakdown, the, the big piece that made a difference there was the increase in the, the vaping and the tobacco suspensions around that. So, the, the reporting of that has really increased, well, not just the reporting, but the occurrence of that has increased with the vaping, so that's what raised that number.
And one thing you don't see here is, you don't see where this data started in 2015. So, if you go back to 2015 on out-of-school suspension, you have a substantial drop from where it was in 2015, and so, this year represents a, a small uptick, but it's very small relative to where that, where it was when this team took over. And then, as she mentioned, you know, the, one of the main reasons behind that had to do with vaping and, and related offenses.
And so, the prevention program, we believe, will make a big difference with that.
Yeah, so I just, when it comes to like a black swan-type event like this vaping thing, I really think we need to separate out the numbers, and then we really need to show, you know, we've got a big entity in there that's changing the whole trajectory. Pull it out so that we can see, you know, what the long-term is, and then see what the impact is that we're having on that, that one event, because...
Can certainly do that.
Yeah, this, this is really unfortunate, because I know a lot of work has gone into reducing out-of-school suspensions, and to have the numbers look the way they do because of that singular event is, it's, you know, just, I don't think it's a fair representation of what has actually transpired.
Percent?
And maybe, I believe 15, I, I believe in 15, it was around 6%. I believe we've come down quite a bit on that. So, yeah, we can get that information to you. Okay. We're also working to increase the percentage of our students that are enrolled in more challenging courses. We won't have that information available until we have graduation rate, because it's based on the graduating numbers as well, so we'll get that to you as soon as possible. Industry certifications, again, a lot of that is based upon graduation rate, so we need to wait until we see who specifically has graduated, is determined has graduated, before we can get that data for you. This question was, I'm sorry, this target was set around a question on a PBIS survey, which was not given last year. Instead, they chose to do a different pilot survey, and the question was very similar to it, and, and the point of it is to find out, do students believe there's someone in a school that has their back, is someone that they can trust, someone that they can go talk to? And the baseline data was that 64% of the students agreed that, that they did. Obviously, we want that to be much larger. So, I've been working with Chuck Bradley, we're talking about what will be put in place this year. A lot of the efforts that came from Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act, I believe, will make an impact on this, because a lot of our teachers are getting additional training on how to, to help students feel more comfortable, how to identify students who may be in trouble. So, I think that will go a long way toward impacting this. The next set of goals were around HR, and most of that data will not be available till the end of this month, possibly October, or hoping by the end of September, just one Unfilled positions on the first day of school was .28%. Last year, that number should be available very, very soon for this year, but we, we're sure that it was less than the .5%. The connects to offers, again, goes to the hiring, sorry, this doesn't cooperate real well, goes to, to, when you meet someone at a recruitment event, are you making those connections, and are those connections resulting in offers? And you'll see that they're also looking to turn those into actual hires as we move into this coming year. Safety was around our safety plan. It's, it's difficult to set very specific goals around this, because there are some things that, that are a little confidential around what is available in some schools and what, what has actually been put into place, but at least one-third of that plan has been completed, they continue to work on that. Some of those pieces have actually been prioritized and put on a little bit faster track to make sure that we have equity around the district, and that are, obviously, our student safety and our staff safety is a top priority. Transportation cost per mile is one of those really lagging numbers, which we probably won't have until January, but they've been working. Part of the proximity plan will help with that, to reduce the miles that are driven. Hopefully, we'll get some of those costs down there as well. Our energy costs, there's some good news there. That has been a steady decline for us in terms of cost of energy per square foot, and there've been a lot of, a lot of work put in on that over the last few years. Cost of construction for student station, you're quite aware of the state requirements, and that we probably will not meet those state requirements with that. However, we won't have the actual numbers or compare to the state median until the end of, of October, probably. Customer service satisfaction, I'm pretty sure you've heard me talk about this one before. We're not quite where we want to be with it, but we're also not happy with the tool that we're using. Right now, district personnel have a, a signature line, at the bottom of their signature line, have a survey link that people can go to, and what we found is that it's not very clear to people what the use for that is. Sometimes we get in there, we get comments that, I don't really know what this department does, which begs the question, why did you fill out the survey? But we're working on that, we're putting a team together to... We're putting a team together to find a better way to get some information from our customers, because we want to make sure that, that we are providing the level of service that we need to provide. And we want to make sure that we have a good way to get actionable data, because what we're getting right now isn't very actionable.
Have a question, please.
Please, Mr. Jevon.
So like, you know, when you're taking a survey, you know, like the news press does one, and then it'll, it'll tell you that the, so many people, it expands out as, as the usage has been used. Maybe that would encourage someone if they, because I always like to see who, how the participation is, and you'll see that. So maybe that, that could be something that would go back to the, to the customer and say, "Hey, X amount." Because I think that, for me, I would say, "Hey, did, did you take that, you know, survey? We do it with the realtors." So like, and it tells you how, how many participated. And I think that would be encouraging. I don't know, I was just, it was something I thought of that might go right back. Once they, they completed it, they'll see who, you know, who's used it, who's done it. You know, just, you know, it, you know, it's like the United Way as they increase their, you know, funding and usage.
Get to see the thermometer go up.
You know, yeah, it's just, I don't know, it's just something I thought of.
That's, yes, we can certainly look into that. Right now, we use Survey Monkey, and I'm not sure that it has that capability.
Okay.
But as we explore other options, that's certainly something we can look at.
Just something I thought about. Thank you.
Do you have a question? No, no. Please.
The other ones are around improving our efficiency and effectiveness. You can see in our quality trainings around, basically, our Lean Six Sigma courses, we have a really big increase in our administrators. Over 80% of our administrators have had at least one course in that. We've had one yellow belt level training this year. We have a DMEAC, which is Define, Analyze, Improve, Measure, and Control, which is the next step, coming up on the 27th. We have 30 people going through that. We'll have a project management course in October, and then we'll begin our next round of green belt projects in November. So we have a lot moving forward. The, the struggle, if there is, or the challenge, is to involve classroom teachers, because it does involve time out of class to be able to do this. So we're looking at other ways to provide some training to classroom teachers that can get some of those basic tools to them, and ones that they can see as being very usable and meaningful in the classroom. And then our increased revenue, well, you know, we had a big boost to that one, thanks to our voters in Lee County last year. So we are very, very grateful to have that external funding coming in. And as you know, it's being closely watched and put to good use. So those were our results from last year. Any other additional questions?
Dr. Atkins?
Just, just a couple of comments. I mean, one is that with goal, you know, 24, we'll obviously make adjustments to that based on the, the capital. And then breaking out, we're working with, I know, Dr. Savage, Lauren Stillwell, Kaylee Rodden, and the foundation, I think, are, are working to try to come up with a different plan in terms of our revenue. And, and we're also looking at doing some restructuring that might involve our grants department. And so that, we'll bring that forward to the board once we complete that work. Dr. Spiro was involved in that as well. I failed to mention his name. The other thing is, Cindy, don't want to put you on the spot, it just remind me, transportation's one-time arrival goal.
We'll be getting to that in just a minute.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to say, before we move on, about that survey, how frustrating it is. And we talk about this all the time, but we haven't been able to solve the problem. We put so much information out, and we put it out in every form known to man, human beings, and cartoons, and Twitter, and Facebook, and YouTube, and everything, and parents still aren't getting it. I had a social media discussion with a parent the other day who asked me what we were doing for safety and security, and I said, you know, "Some of it I can't say." And we have increased our funding for mental health. And Saturday, we have this wonderful event at Barbara B. Mann, and the response was, "I wish I had known about that earlier." Well, even if I wasn't on the school board, I would have known about that weeks ago, because we have, we've been advertising it forever. So it's just so frustrating to me that, that that's the feedback that I get. It was kind of like, like a zinger, like, "You should have told me earlier. I've got kids, and the information has come to me as a parent, not as a member of the school board, but as a parent." So I don't, I don't know what to do. I wish we could find an answer. If there's a genius out there somewhere who can figure out how to engage. You know, I'm talking about parents that are into, you know, they're helping their kids with homework every day. You know what I mean? They're, it's, anyways.
It's a difficult, it is.
It is really, really frustrating.
There's so much information there that I think sometimes, that we're kind of blinded by it. You know, if you're not looking for something that's specific to your needs, there's just so much that, that you don't see anything. So having looked at last year's with 24 goals, I personally had a hard time remembering all 24. We've had that conversation. So one of the things that came back to us from our, from our, our strategic planning committee was that we really needed to, to make it a little leaner in terms of the document itself, and help people be able to, to understand it, to be able to remember it, and to really be able to explain what was going on. So we went to work on that. And we started out with, we, we want to make sure that it's very clear what our priorities are around our mission, our vision, and our values. So that part is exactly the same as it was last year. We'll be rolling those out formally again at a principal meeting in either October or November. And again, the, the most important thing, the only reason that we exist is for students. So absolutely, our number-one priority is student success. And we have defined that very clearly, as to what that means, that it's mastery of our core subject matter, that the social, emotional, and foundational skill development is there, and that as a district, we're sustainable, because otherwise, we can't do the, the work that needs to be done. And that involves help from our families and community. It involves our workforce being a very productive and successful workforce, and it involves making sure that we're always getting better. So we looked at that in terms of, what are the overall big ideas? And came down to five long-term objectives related to those success factors. The first one is increase academic achievement, which again, is what, what most people think, "What do you do in school? It's, you know, academic achievement." We know that there's a whole lot more involved, but that's the first thing that comes to people's minds. In order to do that, we, we talked just a little while ago about the importance of kindergarten readiness. And it has become so critical to our district that we felt it needed to be pulled out as its own objective. Same thing with college and career readiness. We need to make sure that when students leave, they have options for pathways, because we know not all of our students want or need to go to college. So what are we doing to make sure that they are prepared to walk out the door when they graduate and become an active member of the workforce? Increasing our workforce success is critical to that, because if we don't have a steady, talented workforce, we can't help the kids. And then becoming more operationally effective and efficient will help us to put more money where it needs to be. So those are our big five areas. You're familiar with the strategies that we've talked about for the last couple of years, and these are still part of the, the plan itself. It's hard to believe that we're already in the last year of that 2018 to 2020 list of strategies there, and you see that those continue on. When you want to get down to the details, so what does it mean when we talk about increasing academic achievement? Then you go to these live links. So we're going to go first to academic achievement. And this will take you to a Google document, which will be a live document, updated at least quarterly. And if you went in and played around in these, you found that some of them are still being updated as we speak, as, as new data comes in, becomes available to us. So as you look through these, I'm sure that as our teachers look through these, they're going, "What? Wow." Some of these are very aggressive targets. But that goes back to last year's goals and saying, you know, "We really want to meet those proficiency targets, and we want to meet our ranking targets." And that means setting very aggressive goals for us. It's kind of like one of those things, you know, if, if you shoot for the moon, at least if you miss, you still land in the stars. That's where we are. We're shooting for the moon. We're making sure that we're working to get the proficiency levels as high as possible. And if we come up a little short, we'll deal with that, but at least we know where we, where it is we want to be. So when you look at these, the very first goal around that is, is to make it to an A district, because that looks at all of the components that are included in school grade, 11 components around that, looking at proficiency, looking at science and social studies, looking at learning gains, not just proficiency, looking at the lowest 25. So those become our key performance indicators. And as you go down, you'll see that, you'll be able to look at those on a quarterly basis and see where we stand in terms of, of being on target to meet those goals.
So one of, one of the things that we, we have been looking at, again, this is the Dr. Savage analysis, is, you know, where is some low-hanging fruit? Where are we not making the grade where we could be making greater strides? So for example, this past year, I think we really did a lot of great work at, at the elementary level in ELA proficiency. And then math has always been, we've, we've made tremendous progress in math over the last two or three years. But we have opportunity in science. Science is absolutely not where we wanted it to be. Social studies is another area. CTE in terms of, and career and tech, career and tech, or career and college readiness, so the certifications. So these are some, just some of the areas that our analysis have demonstrated that we could do, do more. The other thing that we're doing is looking literally school by school. And so where, where are these schools stacking up in terms of how well they are, are doing with learning gains? Because you may have a school that earns an A or a B and stays off the radar screen, but when you start to really compare them to their colleagues. Example, I think I've given you is Manatee Elementary. It's a B school, but really, they're outperforming just about every school in the state in terms of what they're able to do. And you don't, you can't tell that by just looking at that school grade, but if you look down at the data and how, how far are you taking the students that you have, you know, you take, you see what a superstar like that's doing. But it also reveals, hey, maybe this is an A school that could be doing a better job with how much they are adding. And so using that, our academic services team is able to focus our support mechanisms more strategically than we ever have been able to do in the past, and identify some of those areas, and provide schools the support they need to maybe improve in some of those areas that where they're, they're somewhat deficient.
Ask you a question. Do we, or whoever, when we look at those things, at how different schools are performing, are we also factoring in the stability of the staff at that school? Do we have any kind of data on the relationship between stable staff, not a big turnover, versus how much the school is advancing or going the other way, perhaps, unfortunately?
We do, we do look at that. In fact, what, what's happening a lot of times when Dr. Spiro's team starts to get, you know, drill down into some of the reasons why the data's saying what it says, that high school, or, well, any school principal's going to say, "Well, we had substantial staff turnover in this particular area." In fact, we were meeting with a, a school principal recently, and that, relative to the data, and that was one of the issues, had been a lot of turnover at that particular school, major loss in, let's say, a couple of great science teachers can really have an impact on your data.
Well, and that's, that's what I would surmise would, would happen, that there's usually an adverse effect when you have that in, in the, in the staff. And so my, my, my earlier comments about principals and, and, you know, retention, I'm on that particular committee for our strategic plan, that's just another piece of it that's so important, that when we lose those people, or even when they transfer somewhere, that very often, we're also losing, you know, very, you know, maybe a team leader in a certain grade, or, or a team leader in high school in a, in a certain subject level. So...
And having a high percentage of new teachers certainly can impact as well.
Right.
Which is one of the reasons that our professional development is so targeted to different groups of teachers, to really try and support, so that we can, can get them the support they need, so they can support their students.
Right, yeah. So I guess that's just my point, that we can't forget the importance of having stability in, in the schools, and for each school to keep, hopefully, keep their key players, the ones that, and while I'm bringing it up, the, the veteran or seasoned teachers that are the ones that really are huge mentors to those that haven't been in the schools as, as long. So I just wanted to...
Any questions on these particular goals? Take you into the next section, which is those around kindergarten readiness. And as Dr. Atkins mentioned, we are meeting on Monday to talk about some strategies around this, and also the work that we're doing with Future Makers and the, the Early Childhood Coalition, and how we can more thoroughly involve the community in the support for that. So as you look here with kindergarten readiness, we're talking not just about the STAR early learning, which is also known as FlicR's, which is the data that the state is looking at, which is the number that you saw had actually dropped down to 39%. But there's, there are also other assessments that are done in pre-K. The, the golden assessment, as they call it, really gives them a little more information. And when you talk to pre-kindergarten teachers, they prefer looking at that, because it looks at the growth that the student makes over time, and it looks at things other than just purely academics. So we know that there are problems with STAR early learning in terms of students knowing how to use a mouse, being able to take the test appropriately. However, those are problems for every other county in our state as well. What we want is, how can we get more detailed information on our students, not just from that one test? We want to triangulate data wherever possible. So you'll see some different measures being used here in addition to the STAR early learning. We also believe that a big piece of this is to get our pre-K providers in our community involved with the schools. We don't have true feeder schools, but we do have a likelihood that if there is a preschool that's right beside Skyline Elementary, a lot of those kids are probably going to end up at Skyline Elementary. So we have, we have some skin in the game when it comes in turn to, to making sure that those pre-K providers understand what kindergarten requirements really are. Because a lot of people who are not in education still think about kindergarten as learning how to share, and learning to be nice, and learning how to make friends. And all of that is absolutely true, but it's also about learning how to read. And that didn't used to be the case. So we want to make sure that pre-kindergardeners are developmentally ready when they walk in the door. We don't want to push first grade down to pre-K. We want to make sure that it's a developmentally appropriate course. And we believe that having those interactions between elementary schools and the providers will, will be one big step in that. It also makes a great connection, so that when a child is coming in, we, we had three schools participate in this program in a pilot last year. And I spoke with Nicole Osterman at Cape Elementary, and she said, "You know, I have pre-K directors calling me and saying, 'You're going to get this kid, and here's what you need to know.'" And that's great, you know, we have that within our schools, but we rarely have that between our schools. So the more we can build that type of relationship between our, our community providers and our schools, the better off we'll be. So you, you see a goal around that. Absenteeism in pre-K is also an, an issue. A lot of times, people think, "Oh, they're little, it's, it's okay if they miss." But they're missing some key developmental skills along the way, so they're targeting that. And then again, we spoke earlier about the limited number of pre-K students that we directly serve as part of this district. So the final goal there is around expanding that. And it, it's not a cheap endeavor to expand a kindergarten classroom. For one thing, they have to have a special playground. They have to have particular equipment on their playground. So if we have that already in place at a school, that's great. But if we don't, that's an additional expense of making sure that that's available. So we're working with the foundation, also with Future Makers. Kaylee Rodden is involved in that in terms of fundraising, and Grants Department, just seeing what are our options? seeing what are our options? Do we have current spaces that we could utilize for that? And then what would it cost in terms of salaries, in terms of supplies, everything all included?
Do we know how many of our kindergarten students have attended one of our VPK programs? Or one of our pre-K programs?
I know that last year, we had around 2,000 students in our pre-K program. I don't know if 100% of those went forward into one of our kindergartens.
Does anyone know how many kindergartners we have?
About 5,000, I believe. Does that sound right?
So we're setting academic goals surrounding students over whom?
Not now.
We're setting academic goals around, surrounding students with whom we have interaction of less than half. That doesn't seem very realistic to me. That's one issue. The second issue is, why isn't this part of our legislative platform? There is traction at the state level, as Ms. Morgan mentioned earlier, and the state loves vouchers, right? So one of the issues that was discussed at FSBA was the fact that so much pre-K is provided by private industry right now. And if we try to bring that under our umbrella and make it a pre-K-12 system, you're going to get huge pushback. So let's not get huge pushback. Let's push voucher funding from the state to... I think we're crazy if we don't have the discussion as a board to include this on our legislative platform, because they've already signaled to us that they're willing to talk about this and perhaps put some funding into it. I go back to my first question. I don't know how realistic it is for us to set goals for academic, for readiness for kids that we're not even interacting with, right? Like, how do you do that? That's like, you know, telling Bill Belichick that he's responsible for Miami Dolphins.
If only.
He has no interaction with them, right? Am I crazy? Gwen?
Oh, that's okay.
Ms. Gettins, sorry.
No, that's all right. I'm still Gwen. The question I have is, you know, we talk about the issue of the kids not coming to us ready. Is it a matter of not getting them to pre-K? Or is it a matter when they do get to pre-K, they have not that, had that pre-pre readiness? So that, I mean, that's, that's a question. I mean, is it a, I'm not saying transportation, but you know what I'm saying? Is it a matter that their parents are, it's easier to just keep all of them at home than to try, you know?
Stay-at-home moms are keeping their children home.
And I, that's what I'm saying. Are they just not getting there for us to have the opportunity?
There's several. So first of all, A, sometimes finances is an obstacle to parents accessing pre-K. So that's one issue, is just pure access and involvement in a pre-K program. Second is, we have pre-K programs that are out there that are not preparing students for kindergarten. That's another problem that we have.
And those are probably the ones that they can afford to take the kids to.
Right, yes. That is correct. So those are some of the issues that we're struggling with, you know, trying to improve the access to a quality pre-K program for our students and the removal of the obstacles to that quality program. And then working with our providers, if they do have a pre-K program, of getting that program to a point that it is truly preparing students for kindergarten, because we do, we are struggling with that issue. And one of the things that we saw in terms of reduction in a negative way this year was in those preferred providers, because there's not the incentive to raise the program up to that higher quality for those preferred providers. So we actually saw a reduction in that.
That was part of my question, too. Is there, what are their guidelines for them to, you know, the gap between the guidelines that they're required to do as a pre-K facility and what we need the kids to have once they come to us? Is there legislation, or is there something that says, you know, you get your license and you can, you know, watch kids all day, but does that licensing include that you have to be able to do this, 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 and this?
No.
No. And to me, that's where we talk about legislation.
I know, but they said it's not going to happen, remember?
Right. I mean, because, because it's so closely like saying that the charter schools have to have the same, you know, whatever. It's that type of a, of a, you know, a conflict, but I don't know.
Well, I love the VPKs, only because I know, because my grandkids have gone to them, but they have them for a certain period of time, and then after that, someone needs to come and get them, or otherwise they have to stay in the daycare, and that's an additional charge. That's where the money comes in, because VPK is free, then the additional is a cost. My parents do not have that money. And then I guess, how do we try to work with, I mean, my kids were lucky enough to go to a great school to have them ready, but where do we, and how do we suggest going forward and working with the providers and getting them with the schools, as you had mentioned, to work together to see the needs? So perhaps we could, I don't know if there's something that we offer that they come and they meet with them, or, I mean, I don't know what that looks like.
The pilot that was used last year was developed as part of the Lee Action Coalition, as part of Future Makers, and it involved two meetings between the elementary school and the community providers. One was held in the fall, where they brought them in, just introduced them to what's kindergarten all about, answered questions they had about it, took them on a tour of the school, and just basically started that relationship. And then they brought them back in the spring, and questions or items that had come up in that fall, you know, they addressed those as well. They talked about the changes that had taken place in the students from the fall to the spring, and talked about what they needed to do to be ready for kindergarten in the fall, you know, the following fall. So there's a process document, a draft one right now, that's been developed by the three schools that were involved in that. And we're planning, actually, we're talking to Superintendent on Monday about some plans of taking that forward in order to get some more schools involved with that. Because I agree, setting a goal around something we don't have total control over makes my stomach hurt, because I'm a little bit of a recovery and control freak. But what makes my stomach hurt more is having taught kindergarten for 17 years and watched those children who came in and didn't know that they were wearing a red dress, because no one had ever had that conversation. So that's, we've got to do something. And if it takes bringing it to the strategic level to get some action moving on it, then I think that's what we need to do. I agree, as a board, I think it would be amazing for you to bring that to your legislative platform, because if we, if we really want our students to be college and career-ready when they exit grade 12, they really need to be ready to learn when they walk into grade K. Anything else?
So before we move on, can we as a board, I mean, is there interest in amending our legislative platform to include something local? I'm talking about a local solution to this problem. Is there, go ahead. Well, what I was going to suggest is that Dr. Atkins and staff work on something to present to us, because he's, I believe staff is in the best position to determine what we need here, present to us, and then we could look at it and perhaps vote. But I don't want to direct Superintendent to do that unless there's some kind of general agreement that we want to amend our legislative platform. We haven't started printing or anything yet, have we? Ms. Chief of Staff?
I know that, yeah, our Chief of Staff is Lauren, is, I know you're working with...
It's not over, but we had something to grab.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I guess, I know at one point, and forgive me for having lost track, but weren't we trying to put pre-K into some of our schools? And part of the problem, of course, is space because of our student population, but as we grow, is there any way to build sort of a legislative, a local legislative initiative around expanding your elementary schools from K5 to pre-K5 and doing a pilot, like three schools and try, you know, doing something like that?
We can certainly look at that. I do know that, you know, in terms of looking at our existing facilities, we continue to look at James Stephens as an example.
That's the one I...
Yeah, and trying, trying to provide a space for pre-K there at James Stephens. I know that Dr. Savage had worked initially to do that, and we're trying to revive that effort. So there are others. I mean, so that is, that is an effort that's underway, yes.
I don't know. One part of me is saying, before we can put it on paper and say, this is what we're doing, we need to get the collective, you know, input and, I mean, agreement between local government, between the churches, between all of the community, you know, invested people. And then it has teeth to it. So, I mean, I'm just, and I know you're in communication with these different groups in different ways, and was that, was, was that one of the statements on the foundation? You know how we had the work groups? Wasn't that one of them?
Yeah, the pre-K one, yes.
Pre-K was on one. So couldn't we start at least with that, since it's a, an initiative that's already started with local businesses and entities, and then build on that with the legislators? What I'm saying, go ahead.
No, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Madam Chair, and I think what we can do is, it sounds to me like, you know, we need really just a workshop or briefing on this particular topic, along with some further recommendations from us in terms of legislative platform. This is what's currently going on now specifically. This is some specific strategic goals that we want to do in the future. You know, we weren't ready to do that today. I'm just trying to answer off the top of my head what I know what's going on, but we can, we will certainly do that.
Yeah. No, I thought that one of the things, when we were discussing legislative platform, we had to kind of pare it down, because if you ask them for a gazillion things, it's going to be too watered down. So I'm totally on board with the fact that we do need to do something to get our kids more ready for kindergarten. But I know yesterday, I attended the School Health Advisory Committee and presented what we worked on as a district for health, which is very important as well. Personally, I still go back to what we were talking about before, that instead of our state legislators, that we try to work a little bit more with the County Commission and some of the county people. And, you know, there's all kinds of presentations you can do. The old presentation about investing in the dividends. If you put a dollar into the young children, it pays back $7 or, you know, things like that. The other thing is, it's multi-layered. I, about two or three weeks ago, had an informal meeting with several kindergarten teachers from a particular school. And what they were telling me was, number one, that, and one, I think, had been teaching kindergarten for 17, 16 or 17 years. And she said, every year, she's been seeing across the board, not just by an ethnic or racial or even socioeconomic group, that the levels have been going down. And a lot of it is society and the parents not reading to the kids. I mean, on every level, I think we have more and more parents shoving a phone in their, at the kids. And they are really noticing some of those things, the idea of sharing and all that. And that's paired with, we're expecting, and I never taught kindergarten, but we're expecting a lot of these kids that come in and, you know, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, we wouldn't say, well, this is terrible, and they're not at all kindergarten-ready, because there was, these teachers were saying at their school, play is the P-word. You don't talk about kids playing. And some other things that, I mean, we're putting these kids that are not developmentally ready into, well, you need to learn how to do this. You need to learn, you know, they may not even know more than two colors, and they're supposed to be reading. So I think, really, it's a combination from what I heard from those teachers.
Ms. Morgan?
So in response to your suggestion, I think holding up the legislative platform to include something like this probably doesn't, just, I think we need to move ahead with what we've got.
I agree.
I think that what we do need to do is be prepared to offer both arguments in terms of, you know, just our local data to Carol and to legislators if this comes up, but also to be thinking about, is there in terms of, maybe not the current session, but going forward, something that we can be doing locally to generate interest in the legislature in pre-K? I suspect that many districts will be looking at that, and we should be doing that as well. That would be my comment.
Maybe the Benequisto wing of James Stephens International.
She had that work.
Right?
Usually he does.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher?
So I've been listening to the whole conversation, and my thoughts are going back to something that Betsy just brought up, that she hears from the teachers, because I hear it too. But 20, 25 years ago, kids went to kindergarten, and they learned to share and take turns. Their fine and gross motor skills were developed. They learned how to get along with one another, and they were still reading on grade level by third grade. So my own personal opinion, having studied child development, is that when we're talking about developmentally ready, that includes a lot of other variables, such as their age, which at that stage of life makes a big difference. If your birthday is in September and you come in, but now you're not going to be four until July, that's an almost, you know, almost a whole year...
20%, they're going to live 20% longer.
Well, yeah. So, and when we, when we met with the pre-K providers, were those kinds of things discussed at all? And then when you look at people who are not approved providers, and they're basically in daycare, and we're saying, here's what our kids need to be ready for kindergarten, well, where are they going to get the money to pay the teachers who are going to be qualified to do that academic part of it? So, I mean, I think that has to also be part of the conversation, because in reality, we have kids who, nobody talks to them, you know, they don't know how to eat with a spoon or a fork. And when they come to pre-K, and if they're lucky enough to qualify, and then they can come earlier and be in VPK, yeah, then they get a little bit of an advantage. But as Chris pointed out so eloquently, that's not even half of the kids who come to our kindergartens. So I think that we need to really look at the reality of it. I think we need to include all of the variables and listen to some of the people who are developmental experts and know about child development. And then I think we need to go to the public and ask them also for our two mils back.
So, Dr. Atkins, long story short, this is obviously something we're all very interested in learning more about. Yes, I'm going to move on, and we can come back during Board comments, because we're running way long.
And Madam Chair, I'd like some direction, because we are running way long, and there are still three areas. I know you've all had a chance to look at them. If you want, I can go through each individually. If there are specific areas that you want to discuss or have questions about, I could go directly to those. I leave it up to you.
Well, why don't you click on the next one, and if there are questions, we'll go to those.
All right. So our next area is college and career readiness. And I know that Rita Davis was actually in there during the earlier part of the briefing, doing some updating. Part of this, get there, has some, has some information that she's still waiting on data. So college and career readiness obviously involves graduation rate, so you see that there. Then looking at increasing the number of enrollments in career-themed courses, because we really want students to understand that they have pathways, not just one, but that they have options of ways. And our high school academies do a... that they have options of ways. And our high school academies do a great job of exposing students to what are some other opportunities out there, but they have to, to take advantage of those. So she's looking to increase the, the number of, of, um, students that are actually taking advantage of that. Then again, we're at the increasing percentage of students graduating with at least one industry certification. And involving our business partners more. I don't know if, um, if you saw, there, there was a, an email that came out from the foundation this week that they are tracking the number of business partners with our schools. And there's over five hundred. It's like five hundred and thirty-six, I believe, different business partners that are involved with our schools at some level. But when we look at who's really involved just specifically with our career and tech ed program, there are four. So we really want to increase that and, and hopefully involve them in providing additional opportunities for our students in terms of, um, can they provide mentoring? Can they provide internships? So that, there's a goal around that. And then looking at our adult education students. You know, some of those students are coming back looking for their GED. You know, we lost them a few years ago. Now they, they've realized that, wow, I, I really need that. So they're, they've set a goal around the number of students that complete at least twelve hours of class time per semester in their adult education courses. Any questions around those? Our next area is the workforce and most of these are carryovers and you've seen those. But we do have a new one specifically related to non-instructional personnel. Because as important as it is to have that teacher be stable, it's also important that we have a stability around non-instructional personnel. Bookkeepers, for example. It's really hard to keep bookkeepers. And so how can we improve the culture, the working conditions and the, the support that they're provided there? So you can see they still have the same goal around decreasing in turnover for school-based instructional personnel, increasing that retention rate for the teachers' levels, what, years one through five. And you'll see that that target, um, it's hard to move because you're looking at a five-year average. So you're not going to move a five-year average in one year. So they're looking at that as a long-term goal there. Maintaining percentage of, um, core area teaching positions on the first day of school and then decreasing non-instructional turnover. Questions there? All right. We'll pop back out. And then our, um, our last area is a little different than the way we've done this before when we're looking at how are we improving our efficiency and effectiveness? And this is where the transportation goal comes in. As we, we talk about key work processes within departments and divisions. So in the summer, we had a training that asked every department leader to start thinking about what are the key work processes in your department? Well, what's the, the big thing that you do that really adds value to the district? So in transportation, what is it that they do? They get our students to school, right? And, and home too. We want them home too. But we need them at school in order for them to be able to learn. So their big goal this year is to increase their on-time delivery of students. And that's defined as getting them to school before the bell rings and then getting them, being on the ramp to take them home within ten minutes of the bell ringing. To give Roger Lloyd a lot of credit, you know, he, he said, yep, that's what we need to do. Now, I also said, that's a really tough thing to do. So think back the past month of school when we're looking at pickup for students from school, getting them back home. What happens around three o'clock every afternoon in August? We have big thunderstorms, right? We don't let students leave a school in the middle of a thunderstorm. So that obviously impacts their on-time delivery rate. But what we've asked them to do is to keep track of that. So they, they're looking at their GPS to know when the school bus hits that site. So they know when they're there. But also if they're stuck trying to get to Mariner High School and they can't because the road construction has them stopped, they're gonna make a note of that, you know, spent twenty minutes trying to get to the school because of construction, waited on the ramp for fifteen minutes because of a thunderstorm, whatever it is. So at least then we have some data to make some decisions with. Right now, um, a lot of the day, a lot of the decisions revolve around where the bus stops are and, you know, how many students need to be there. And that's important stuff. But we also need additional information to make decisions based on what's impacting that on-time arrival. And this should let them do that.
And one thing about this particular one, we're, we are utilizing, uh, existing technologies. So I will thank, um, you know, not only our transportation team, but also our ISD team, which has helped, uh, um, move this initiative forward. You know, it wasn't all that long ago, just a couple of years ago where we're, we're using Castle and we had assistant principals out on the bus ramp entering data in individually, very subjective in terms of, of how that was inputted into the system. Now using, um, actual GPS to do that. So it becomes much, and setting a specific standard, um, you know, it becomes, um, you know, just a much more, um, I think valid process and standard process that we can really count on. And then moving forward, um, I think you'll see this, um, you know, morph into some other initiatives around timekeeping and, and, um, you know, and hopefully move away from our Lee clock to some more technology-rich solutions.
And as you scroll down, you can see that, um, that there are in-process measures that are being looked at to, to determine are we on track to meet those. For the transportation one in particular, we're looking at that on-time arrival and that's being tracked daily, but it will be monitored quarterly at this level. And then miles between preventable accidents. Because if a bus is in an accident, that obviously is going to slow things down. When we looked at, um, other departments within that division of operations in, uh, safety, you know, the, the primary interactions that sa, our safety department has with our schools is, revolves around training and making sure that principals know what to do if there is an incident. So they're looking at a post-training readiness assessment. After those principals have been trained, do they understand what they're really supposed to do? And then, um, also in operations, we went into maintenance and talked about a school request, a maintenance item. And once that's approved, how long does it take for that to be completed? So they're looking at the percentage of those that are completed within ninety days. Also in operations, construction of board-approved projects on schedule and within budget. Two really important pieces there. Then as we move over into, oh, I'm sorry, one more in operations was utilization of school capacity. So, you know, how do we make sure that within our zones, we're utilizing those as much as we can, keep them at a reasonable level? We, we know that we have some challenges around that right now, which is why we're building schools, right? And business services, payment of our invoices. So we're looking at the percentage of those invoices that are paid on time. And then the one that's most important to employees probably, payroll. So is payroll being done? And the percentage of checks that they have to run off cycle. It's, if, if an error is made in a payroll check, then they need to correct it and run another paycheck. So that costs money. It costs time. It costs resources. So they, they want to cut down on those. Also, the RFP process. How long does it take from the beginning to the end? And can we decrease that? Support and develop our leaders. You've talked a lot about how important it is to have quality leadership at a school. And so what time of, what type of support are our assistant principals and our principals getting so that they have the skills that are needed to run an effective school? I go on down in human resources. Human resources, you probably noticed, has a lot more than anybody else. Uh, they've been doing this type of work for a couple of years now. They've really been in, doing deep dives into what are their key processes. So they had nine key processes that they had developed and you can see all of the specific measures around those. Then when we, um, get down to information systems, they have some specific sales tax projects that have been assigned to information systems. So they want to make sure that all of those are done on schedule. Academic services, most of academic services is involved in that area of increased student achievement. But one that is truly operational is the student enrollment process. So we talked to Saretta about, you know, what is, what is a goal around that? And she said, I, I'd really like to see families be able to complete that enrollment process in a very timely manner. So we picked a number. She said, we think thirty minutes makes sense. Now they're collecting data. This is baseline. But they believe that if people come in with their paperwork in hand, then they should be able to get through that process within thirty minutes. Now, what that does not mean is that when that thirty minutes are up, they're gonna be rushing through and saying, sorry, can't talk to you anymore. Need to get the next person in. If, if the family has questions about, tell me about the uniform policy or tell me about the neighborhoods, you know, because this one's a little further away than what I was thinking about at first or, or I'm new to this community and what, what do I need to know? We still want those interactions to take place. That's not going to be included in that thirty-minute timeline. But at least this will give us some good baseline information to see, how long does the process really take? And what are those impediments to the process? Normally it's paperwork that the, the family walks in and they don't have a birth certificate or they don't have proof of residence. So if, if we have data that says that's what it really is, then you can go to work on what are the processes to put in place to make sure they know that before they walk in the door. They're even looking at, how can they go out into the community and provide, um, enrollment opportunities in the community, more enrollment opportunities within the community so that people don't have to feel like they come in? We know there's online opportunities, but we also know that a lot of people feel like they have to be standing at that door when it opens the first day of student enrollment. Okay.
Okay. Comments, questions? Ms. Juvanelli.
I know this is kind of thinking a little, and, and so bear with me because I just am thinking, you know, Betsy mentioned the fact that parents give their, the kids the phone and everything. So I just couldn't help but think, how, you know, how do we get, how do we reach those that can't afford to go to childcare or have the after, after-school childcare from pre-K? So I was thinking, is there such a thing as like virtual, virtual pre-K? Or something that we could put the milestones, you know, the basics on YouTube for them to goo, you know, I'm a Googler, you know, y'all might be, I'm not a teacher so I don't know that.
No, no, I'm not laughing at you. She said Sesame Street and I laughed.
I know, I thought it was that, I was thinking Sesame Street when she was speaking actually because I'm thinking, what did I, you know, what, kids aren't in front of a TV anymore really like that.
Can I just say real quick, I read an article last week and I'll have to look at it and send it to everybody. And it was about a program where the parents were working and all, they could not read to their children. And it was an app that they used. And there were questions that, um, they asked the children and there was a response back. And I looked for it and sent it out. But it was for the urban-type areas where the parents were not available to do that. And it was working very well.
And I don't know if this is a Trey thing or if it's a communication thing. I don't, I don't know. I just was thinking, how do you give, you know, give the parents the tools to help their children? Because they're handing them their phones and they, and they walk away. I mean, I, my, my daughters are doing it with my grandkids. So I'm thinking, what better way? Put that app on and at least they're learn, getting the milestones that you need to get them ready. And before they, even if it's just colors and counting to ten. I don't know. I just, I was just thinking, I just want to throw it out there. And I, I don't know. Like I said.
I think that when Dr. Atkins comes back to us for either, for an extended discussion, that can certainly be something.
And maybe there's, I, there's already something out there. I don't have a clue.
Things out there.
Maybe we put it, communicate the, get that communication out to the parents and, and those app, you know, those apps and they can give that to their, you know, their children to, for the future to get them ready. I don't know. I just was thinking. That's all. That's all.
I was just gonna say, I saw on the news the other night where there's a, a thing where teachers are volunteering to read to kids and they can watch it on their phone or their iPad or whatever. Yeah.
Same thing. That's, that too. That's, that's, that's the way, that's the future. I'm sorry, but it is. And, and so how do we, if that's what's declining our, our children, how do we utilize it to increase? I don't know. It's just my thought.
Ms. Jordan?
No, I was gonna say, they do have a lot of those ads and even the reading with the Actors Guild. They read to kids and you follow along. But again, you have to get the parent to click that on.
That's exactly, that's the whole thing. Right.
I mean, just even putting captions on your TV is supposed to be beneficial for children at any age.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments? All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It will be coming, um, to the consent agenda on October seventh.
Great. Okay. So the next item, I believe I'm on the wrong agenda. I'm still on the wrong agenda.
Capital.
Come on. Capitol update with Mr. Rickembacher. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board. Dr. Atkins, if you didn't judge by thy body shape, cheerleader.
What'd you say? Cheerleader.
Cheerleader.
You have to do right down here, so.
Do cartwheels or split.
You find me most weekends at an Irish pub with a pint of Guinness in my hand, lady.
Oh, cheer. Yes.
Oh, cheer. Slow sometimes. Got it.
I think that's cheers though. Cheers.
You're a crafty one, aren't you? Oh, my gosh.
Full size?
Yeah. Turtles.
Oh, my gosh.
Turtles.
I like that. Can, even an old dog can learn.
Fifteen hundred dollars a turtle.
Uh, welcome for this, this month's up Capitol update on all of our large projects. I do have a little bit of information right after, very quick. I just want to fill you up on some, fill you in on some new projects we're also getting ready to gear up for. MM East Zone Middle School, the architect and engineer, we've just evaluated sixty percent construction design documents. Um, we have cost estimates from both the architect, that's part of our phase one process. The AE is coming in at forty-seven point seven million dollars and our CM has gone up to fifty-two point one million dollars. So we've had a slight increase in that fee. But again, this is a balancing act and as our drawings get tighter and tighter, we get closer and closer to the real number. So my personal belief is I think the fifty-two is going to come down slightly, a little bit. All permitting is submitted for review by local agencies and we do have a easement issue that we're dealing with another entity for that street. And we've received a response and currently are planning and our legal department will be reviewing that and responding accordingly. As you can see on the right-hand column, and Ms. Juvanelli got, Juvanelli got to hear about this at our CAC meeting, we have approximately twenty-nine gophers. So we're gonna be spending about thirty thousand dollars to relocate gopher tortoises. So.
So I know the new mascot for that school.
That is excellent.
She just got it even better. Tell her, go ahead and say what you just said.
From the middle school.
That is where the Tortuga Preserve came up, something similar that we encountered there.
That's correct. And they're still at Tortuga. They actually recreated a little preserve behind it. We're, we're shipping them to a luxury hotel.
Oh, my goodness.
Next up is Triple M High School. If you haven't already heard, we're out there clearing. Uh, they're moving the, the earth, the silt fences going up. Um, we're fielding some questions from some neighbors, but I'm certain that that will calm down over time. And, uh...
I have to say that as I'm driving home and driving by there every day, I drove by one day and you couldn't see anything. The next day you go and you can see all the way to the, to the elementary school. And it's just strange looking at all that cleared away.
So it, it'll start coming together quickly. It's amazing how that happens. So that we're on target. We're scheduling, we're feeling some community questions and trying to put them at ease that, you know, we're gonna be a good neighbor with them.
Scott, could you answer the one, there was an eagle question, Eagle Nest, that was this site, wasn't it?
Yeah, there's no Eagle Nest. Uh, part of our phase study and our permitting, we have to do all sorts of surveys. We actually did have to provide what they call a caracara survey. And caracara is, it's more of a buzzard and it didn't live on our property, but they transitioned through during seasons. Uh, the eagle that was there, it's a hunting ground. It's a sixty-acre field. So of course, from time to time, there may be an eagle. I get them on my, my pool and I, in my little neighborhood next to Trafalgar, they go for ducks and stuff. So there is no nest there. There hasn't been a nest there and we had it recertified to that fact.
Just in case it came up, I wanted you to have that information because that was one of the questions that was, was raised.
Correct.
But now, okay, so they'll all be removed and?
There's, there are no eagles to remove. Just let me make that clear.
But I mean, the other birds that you were talking about.
The caracara are just transitional. They're not on-site either. It's just during migration season. We have to do surveys to validate that we're not affecting their migration pattern, which we did in the beginning of the job. So we, we have no animal issues on that site.
So we can go walk outside and not be swept away?
Except for the really big snakes. So if you go out there, no, I'm just saying.
Oh, thanks. Oh, thanks.
That was unnecessary.
Sasso prototype schools, elementary KNN, we're in the process of the RFQ process. You folks have just approved the ranking for Harvard Jolly as the architect for the design of that campus. We had an initial kickoff negotiation meeting with them earlier this week, and that will continue on as we talk about the design and exactly what we're going to do with that school design. The construction manager ranking now is scheduled to come to the board for approval of that ranking on October 7th, and the building official will file thereafter on the 22nd, and that gives us our three components of the triangle for the Phase 1 design services.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, two questions. First one should be quick, prototype school.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, am I right in assuming we're looking at something unusual that's not, that we haven't done before in the district? And that's why these are going to be prototypes of a new kind of school?
No, it's our district standard prototype, no different than what we're building as a middle level at MM.
Okay, so they are?
The type, elementary and middle, at this time.
All right. I've read, and I think I asked a question about it a while back, about the village of Astero and certain committees that have been working with you or with other people here in the district. And when I asked the question, I think Lauren came back and said, oh, there'll be a briefing on that eventually. But I'd like to know what is happening in Astero, and what kinds of meetings are the officials in Astero conducting with us in conjunction with these two schools?
Yeah, we're currently, the planning division is in conversations with the village of Astero for any potential share use of some sports fields in and around that entire campus and the property they own, and maybe the county as well. So those are ongoing, there are conversations, but nothing that is changing what I'm doing in terms of building a prototype elementary and a middle school.
I'd really like to see a report on, you know, because obviously, there are individuals in Astero that know a heck of a lot more about what's going on in that area than at least this board member. So I would really appreciate getting some updates and maybe a briefing sooner than later on exactly what kinds of inputs and what's being considered, just for my own edification.
I just recently met with an Astero village on some of the driveway or roadway improvement cuts that they wanted to do out of our high school, existing high school parking lot there and so forth. And there was discussion of they were looking for some looks and some shared-use facilities in our local agreement type of stuff with planning. So I'm sure my boss Kathy Eball and Dominic, the long-range planner, I'm sure they'll be putting a package together for you shortly to review on what turns up from those discussions.
We did just have, just had a meeting recently with the village of Astero. They came up and met with us, and so we are going to do a briefing. Kathy can give you a quick update on where we are.
Good afternoon. Yes, the village of Astero approached us about two months ago about doing some shared-use park facilities and other facilities in that area as we prepare to build the new elementary and middle school. We have it scheduled for a tentatively scheduled for briefing in the middle of October. We just, I would like to tell you things, but honestly, we had a meeting this week with Astero that clearly showed us that we're not at a point yet to be able to share things, because we don't know where this is going to go yet. They have a couple of different ideas that they're presenting, some of them leaving things in their current status, some changing the way that we have planned, that we've initially scoped out the way our projects would work. So we have asked the village of Astero to come up with some more definitive requests of us, to more definitively define what it is that they are looking for in this partnership, to help us understand what any changes in our scope would involve, what any changes in our timeline might be involved, what any changes in our current budget for this project, would it be involved? And until we have that level of confidence and information that we understand what the village of Astero is asking for, we think it's premature to bring the information to the board, because you will ask us questions that we don't have answers to, because this partnership right now is being driven, being driven by village staff, and specifically is being driven by the city manager at the village of Astero. So we know that they have, at our request, are working to identify a design professional to give us some schematics of what this would look like, and to cost out some potential changes to the overall project. I hope that we're able to bring this in October, but I'm going to be honest, I'm not confident that it will happen in October. It could be November before, November or December before we're able to bring this forward. Obviously, the longer it takes, they know our timeline, they know that we are in the process of engaging our design team and construction team, and that we are intending to start the design process in December. So it is encumbered on them to bring us the information we've asked for as quickly as possible.
So, did you, I just, so could you say they have a design?
We asked them.
That they're going to hire somebody to?
We asked, so I don't know if you know what a bubble plan is, but a bubble plan basically shows a site plan with uses in different locations. We've asked them to provide us some bubble plans that give us some better definition of what they have expressed to us in word form, so that we can show you what that means and what they're really thinking about. So it's not that they are designing our property, it's that they're going to design the placement of the property.
So if I could comment too, on the Astero thing, KNN is a staff-to-staff thing. That is not an elected official-to-elected official thing. I meet with Nick Bedos probably once a week, and that is all surrounding the Astero Education Initiative. And if you, if my colleagues would like me to update you more frequently on what's occurring there, I can, but there's really not a lot to update on right now, because we are trying to finalize our fundraising materials. And also, Nick drives the bus on a lot of this. He's very, very, he has the ability to drive the bus on this, because Astero is his area, whereas I represent an entire district, and I have to spread my energies across an entire district. Also, he's very, very engaged right now in setting up the culinary fundraiser that we have in December. And so a lot of our, I mean, he's really updating me on, I talked to this business member, I talked to that business member, Ms. Stillwell, how many changes have we made to the window cling? I mean, it's just, it's like little tiny detail, we're putting together a window cling that says Astero Education Initiative, so that donors or volunteers in the village of Astero can put that on their car to show everybody in Astero that they're part of this initiative.
And the fundraising is for what exactly?
Is for the four schools that serve Astero students. And so the initiative, the task force gets together, the task force is made up of myself, Nick Bedos, and the four principals, and we also have a staff facilitator that goes to those meetings, and we get a list from each school as to what do they need, what do they want, what is their wish list of items that goes above and beyond the DRA provided by the school district. And so last year, each school got $6,000. And like, we gave $6,000 worth of steel drums to Three Oaks Middle School. Those are the kinds of things we're doing. All money collected goes through the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools. They have a separate account for the education initiative in the village of Astero. And eventually, the goal is to scale this up countywide, you know, really perfect it. We have not come, we haven't perfected it yet in Astero. We're still working out the kinks. So after it's perfected, then we can go to Cape Coral, and we can go to Benita Springs, and we can go to, I would think the county might be the last stop, only because of sort of their resistance to play, to play nicely with us sometimes. But each community is also going to be different. You know, like Astero has tremendous, what I call FIPS, formerly Important People, who can walk into a school and have an immediate impact, like an engineer could help a kid with calculus that might not be in other parts of the county, right? So how it looks in Astero is going to look different in other parts of the county, but the goal is to start it there, perfect it there, and then scale it up across the county.
Okay, so are you, are you working on this as an individual, or as a member of this board?
I'm working on this as a member of this board in conjunction with the memorandum of understanding that was entered into between the village of Astero and.
And so I would respectfully say that you probably should be giving board member reports on this.
Great, happy to do it.
Yeah, because this is all, I've asked for it in one of the, not from you, but, you know, in our ask that we do for the superintendent's office, and basically, it was the same answer as you just gave, that it's too early. But yet, this is another whole piece that, you know, when I said window clings, what are you doing? What are you, you know, since you're operating as a member of the school board, it would be nice for us to get regular updates.
Member Vaughn.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
How do I pronounce your last name, by the way?
Eball.
Ms. Eball. Okay, go ahead.
When we first brought this to the attention of the board in the board minutes about a month ago or so, when you asked the question, we thought we were at a more advanced stage of the discussion with the village. So we had hoped that there would be a further discussion quicker. It's been in our subsequent meetings with the village of Astero staff that we have learned that we are not as far along as we thought we were, because quite honestly, some things have changed from the village of Astero to, from the proposal they originally proposed to us to now. So it is not that we are trying to keep things from you, or not that we are trying to delay a discussion, it's just that the discussion hasn't advanced to the point yet that we're able to provide details, because we don't know the details yet.
And just something to be clear, what Ms. Patrika is talking about is different.
Separate, yeah.
Is very separate than what Ms. Eball is talking about. And she is correct. We thought we were much further along. This most recent proposal, some of the things that kind of raised red flags with us was potential for an increased cost to the district and things such as that, and we need to have more information from the village before we can provide that update to the board, so.
Are there any other questions?
We will keep you posted.
I did want to make clear, I'm not at all involved in that. I don't.
No, no, I was clear on that.
Completely appreciative of your desire to be updated, and I will do that going forward. Ms. Gittens.
I believe your initial conversation was about the recreation.
And that's still what the, that's still what the conversation is about.
Okay, and when the superintendent and I had an opportunity to meet with the county managers, and one of the things that I heard in the conversation about the recreation and Astero was that the county, initially, it was the county and Astero and the school district, and that the county decided they did not want to participate. So my question, then, that leaves the two of us, and how is that, and I guess that's what you're working on.
It's part of.
How, then, instead of three, we have two, how does that look for us?
There are a number of questions that we are still working on, and that's why I say, I think, you know, we have targeted to try and bring this as an update to both boards for the village of Astero and to the school board in October. But I, my gut feeling says this is going to take a little bit longer, just because there are moving pieces involved with this that haven't yet been determined, and it's encumbered on the village of Astero, as it is their concept to expedite those discussions and make that decision, make that information available to us as quickly as possible.
Such as county property, district property, private property, village of Astero budget, school district budget, things such as that.
There's quite a bit of information that just hasn't been determined, and we thought a month ago that those issues were more settled than they are.
Ms. Jordan.
I was just going to say, but they do not have any control over what we, as the district, decide to build, though.
Correct.
That's right.
In control.
That's right. They are looking.
City that's trying to share with us.
So what I can say is, they are, they have come to us with a proposal to do three things. One, to expand the use of our facilities so that we can, they have completed a master plan, a parks master plan, and they have identified a number of deficiencies in their own recreational and park facilities, including use sports field areas for their park leagues, sports track space for people who like to walk and things like that. And they know that what we're working on, and they look at the hours that our facilities are in use and what times they need the facilities in use, and see a partnership there. That was the original discussion, could we make those types of things work? And obviously, we believe that those kind of partnerships work very well, because there is a time, there is a time marriage that works very well. But in the recent discussions with them, as Dr. Atkins has mentioned, they have brought forth discussions about changing the site that our property would be on. That involves additional property that could involve relocating our properties. It also involves the county properties, because the county owns property right in the middle of these areas. So there's just a lot of moving pieces that we didn't think were in play in the initial discussions that have come into play in subsequent discussions.
Okay, thank you. Because I guess that was part of the, like, the forum, people spoke about usage of school property, so that's similar to what is going on here.
Yes.
As long as we have control, that's fine with me. And I think also with Ms. Patrika, to me, that's just like a big giant PTA for the whole Astero.
Yeah.
So the fundraising arm, and they just, okay, thank you.
Yep, that's a really good way to look at it.
Any other questions?
But I have to be the president of it. Co-president of it.
I assure you that as we have more information, and it's more definitive, and we have better solidified what it is the village of Astero is looking for in terms of a proposal, we'll bring it back to you as quickly as we can.
We did just receive brand-new information from the village manager, that we weren't expecting.
It was, it was an interesting meeting.
Have they picked out the school colors yet? Because I was working at Astero when we were going to repaint, and they were in there. I don't know if they thought we were going to paint it purple and green, or I don't know what color they thought, but they were like flash, and I'm really happy at how supportive they are of the schools. But my eight years at Astero, I felt like sometimes they were a little over-rambunctious in their, you know, like, I don't know, going to Sherwin-Williams and like, here, look at these, aren't these great?
In my four years with the county as the community planning manager, I had a lot of experience working with the then-community planning panel of Astero. And I can assure you, they are a very energetic group, and very committed and very dedicated to making the best of their public, their public resources. So they're a great group to work with, but I would agree, they are.
A little rambunctious sometimes.
I'll call them energetic, but yeah.
We decided on Hertz yellow.
Yes, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's why Hertz sold it.
Greg, you know I'm going to get a call on that this afternoon. You know I'm going to get a call on that.
I heard that.
Excellent, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
It's purple.
Ms. Rickembacher. Did you say you had a couple things to add after the South stuff?
You also had the capital change order reporting. Were there any questions on the change order report?
Nothing.
Okay.
This is for?
September.
Okay. Specific project, or just?
This is for all the projects. This is our monthly change order reporting to the school board, money coming in, credits coming back, direct material purchases, tax savings.
Is it, is it possible on the large projects like MMM, you know, we have that contingency, and we have those things, could this be a part to kind of show where we're going with that?
You have, the contingency is reported in this monthly report for every project we do, what contingency expenditures have occurred.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't go far enough down. I'm so sorry.
You know, Scott, maybe this would be a good time just to update the board. One of the things on the MMM project, remember the things that we had talked about? You know, looking at the design of that building, we have been looking at making some changes that fall within the contingency that is allocated to the district. And I think if you could brief them just a little bit on what, a couple, one of them had to do with the academy, and then the other one, just the location. and then the other one, just the location of some of the facility pieces.
Correct, I believe, Ms. Vaughn, you had asked me about the $3 million that we had in our total project cost for MMM, that was the owner contingency, and what assurances you had that that wouldn't be furtively spent or returned. Well, we have a couple items that have come up, and I actually briefed the superintendent on this yesterday. One of the things that we had changed from Benita to MMM was, we shifted the cafeteria closer to the bus loop, since a lot of the kids get free and reduce breakfast, so that was a lesson learned. One of the things that Nikki and her staff, or her team, had noticed is...
That's an additional, slight additional cost, though, to do that.
That is correct. What Nikki and her staff had noticed is that the administration section, like at Benita, is to the right, so when we flipped that, the administration is facing the courtyard of the auditorium building, not the outdoor dining and the kitchen. So Nikki brought forward, you know, it'd be much more beneficial if we did a mirror image, so that staff administrators could see out in that courtyard, and there was an issue, and it's the right decision, so we're going to have to get some design drawings changed, because obviously, we've already gone out to bid, so there's a fee of about $70,000 combined to make that switch, right now, we're looking at about $30,000 in some underground changes, we haven't put in, but we have to go back, it may be a longer run. So it looks like it's about $100,000, we also changed the academies, there was a culinary, and now there's going to be a carpentry lab, so we have to redesign the mechanical and electrical in that one shell space.
Because remember, East Lee County has a culinary academy, and then also Lehigh Senior has a culinary academy, so to have another one at MMM just didn't make sense, particularly when you have this need really for construction and carpentry in Lee County.
There's never enough culinary.
I understand.
So what I wanted to make you aware is, that is a curriculum, those are curriculum-driven requests, which are good requests, and that money, that is our money, not the contractors' is supporting that. In addition to that, we just did, we brought a contractor in to look at the portable staging campus behind Astero High, we had budgeted in the total project cost for 1.5 million, the estimate at this moment in time, it isn't the hard bid, is at 1.8, so I would use $300,000 out of that to support that increased cost, so that's where we...
Was that for MMM, or?
It's for MMM, that is correct.
You mean behind Lehigh, then, you said Astero.
Yeah, I'm putting, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, behind Lehigh Senior.
Well, just remember, we were on TV for that, so.
Yes, you are, you're still at your total project cost?
I know, I'm just saying.
Absolutely.
Just saying, we're on TV.
And I keep the superintendent, anytime this comes up, he's the first person to know.
And the question I have, then, so that 7,500, whatever it is, is that coming out of the contingency amount that the contractor has, or ours, or?
No, that's coming, that'll come out of our contingency pot, the contingency that is a shared use within the construction contract, is made for any unforeseen conditions in the construction.
Right.
I don't want to lose that funding now, when I'm building a job, so that fund, the owner's 3% that we have control, that's outside of the GMP, is our money.
Right, but there was an amount, and I can't remember the exact amount now, that was contingency in case things came up, is that where we're taking that out of?
You have two contingencies, in the GMP, which is part of the contractor's contract, his fee, there is a 2% shared contingency to handle unforeseen conditions with the project.
Right.
This is a separate contingency on your total project cost sheet, that's outside of the contract, represents 3%, that is our money, that's our savings account, for lack of a better term.
My bottom line that I'm getting to, in other words, we have set aside monies in contingency that should cover this amount that has come up.
Oh, absolutely.
That we weren't sure.
Yes, that's what I'm telling.
So it's not a matter of coming back to us and saying, we need an extra.
Nope, I'm not coming back, and the reason we have it is for this need.
And that's what I wanted to make clear, so if anybody is watching, that they understand when you say, you know, we need an additional 75, that you're not coming back for money, it's already sitting there, and it will come out of what was set aside for that.
And in most cases, like Cape High, we had a project years ago, we don't ever touch that owner's contingency, and many times, that entire amount is brought back to the coffers to be utilized in other school projects, so, you know, it's only something that the desire of the board, or the super academic requirements, things change over time, that you would want, that we have that ability to utilize that.
Any other questions or concerns here? Dr. Atkins, are we updating our ISOC materials to reflect these changes in cost for future building projects?
Yes, we keep that updated, he's got a couple other items he wants to cover with you.
Go ahead.
Just to give you a heads up, we have our capital meeting, where we discuss future projects, which could be capital monies, or the ISOC tax money being utilized, there's been issues with canopies at portables, many schools have gone years now, we didn't have the funding, so the capital committee identified five schools to get canopies put on, we basically looked at the schools that have had the longest need for this, that have gone without, and we also looked at schools that, based on a matrix, where we feel their portables may still be there, longer, and we've decided there are five schools, Sunshine Elementary, Benita Elementary, Oakhamic, J. Colen English, and Harns Marsh Middle, so we're going to accomplish those over the summer of 2020, obviously, there's a lot of footings and concrete work for the canopies that has to occur, so that will be five projects that we will move forward with for the summer of 2020. In addition to that, on the news, you've had a lot of complaints with traffic backing up for parent pickup, mostly at elementary schools throughout the county, again, we had already engaged and done traffic studies previously at four schools, in that moment in time, we just didn't have the funding that could support, you know, the hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases, it would take to make some corrections, obviously, now we're going to look forward to that with both capital and ISOC money, and those schools, we've already engaged at Tree Line Elementary, we have a traffic study, and we're contracting for full-blown documents to get that work moving forward, Diplomat Middle and Elementary School, a combo site there, we have to do, we have a study for that, but we got to create contract drawings, and then get that prepared for summer work, Heights Elementary, we have a traffic study, and again, we're going to create drawings for that school to get that put out for bid, River Hall is a new one, that just recently came up, so I will be commissioning a civil engineer to do a study and actual drawings for that job, Three Oaks Elementary was another recent one, that, our middle, that recently hit the news, we will commission a study and drawings for that school, Pine Woods, we have a study, but we just met with the Village of Astero, and they have a potential resolution that they're working on, where they may pave a road that is somewhat in closer towards, I want to say Daniels, if I'm right, where it might help provide some stacking at no cost to us, they're working with other adjacent property owners to come to that resolution, so we're not going to move forward with drawings on that until the Village of Astero has a chance to kind of digest what they may be doing with their own funding and their own property neighbors. And that's my report.
Questions, comments? Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Next item is public comment, anyone interested in, nothing, no, there is literally no member of the public here. Board member comments, I'll start at my right, Ms. Fisher.
Okay, so, let's see, I attended the National Overdose Prevention Event at Centennial Park the other night, Monday night, and was happy to meet a former student of mine who was playing with the band that was entertaining in there called Hope by Song, and they donate their time to help people who are affected by addiction and the resulting problems that they have. Yes, yesterday, no, the day before, I attended the Juvenile Justice Board Circuit Advisory Board Meeting, and the discussion was largely around safety in the schools, even though most of the attendees were either law enforcement or county people. I also, yesterday, attended part of the Sheriff's Youth Activities League Meeting, although I got there a few minutes late and spent 35 minutes sitting in the lobby, because the lady there didn't know where the meeting was, but I know that some of my colleagues were there, so I'll let Ms. Gittens and Ms. Patrika fill in on that. I took the opportunity to go to Franklin Park the other night, and to attend the forum with Mrs. Jordan and Superintendent Atkins, I thought the turnout was great, and they talked a lot about the rebuild of the school, which I think is very exciting for that community, and it was good to see a lot of the people there. Yesterday, I attended Rock Your School at Gulf Elementary, which is part of the National Get Your Teach On Movement, so it was character-based, and each one of the grade levels was a house, and so they had a big pep rally, and that was the first elementary school pep rally I had ever been to, and it's a lot different than high school, but it was tons of fun, and I have some videos, if anybody wants to see them, I mean, the kids were so excited, and the teachers worked hard, and they all said they were going to sleep well last night, but it's going to be an event, I think that the kids will always remember, and I think it gave the teachers an opportunity to really do something fun with the kids while they were learning and developing academic skills. I want to say congratulations to Deputy Donna, the SRO at Buckingham, for her honor this week, and on September 25th, it's Dads Take Your Child to School Day, to encourage more parent involvement, and dads being more involved with their kids. And I think that's really all I have today, thank you to the staff for all their hard work, and glad to see that we're moving forward.
Great, Ms. Jivina?
Well, I'm just going to piggyback off of the Deputy Donna, I want to congratulate her, I was going to talk more about it on Tuesday night, because my husband actually worked with her prior to her going to the, to be an SRO at the Sheriff's Department, so, and she is a wonderful lady, and so, and she's done really great things at Buckingham Inceptional School, so I was, that's an honor to actually have her at our school doing the things she's doing, so I just, that's really all I have.
Ms. Gittens?
Okay, the good side of things, I was able to get back in the classroom, I was invited by one of my previous teacher friends to go to Gateway Charter School, Middle and High School, and I had a room full of middle school and ninth graders, and talking about avid, and it was, they had questions all prepared, and it was just really good, it was great to be back in the classroom as well. I had an ask from the Quality of Life Center, they're preparing for their gala, I think it's November 1st, and the question they were asking was about support from the school board as far as purchasing a table or whatever, I don't know what the process is for that, I said that I would bring it up, and how do we do that, Superintendent?
It's good to see.
Are you talking about the supporting of the event itself?
Yes, by purchasing a table is what they were asking.
I think typically what we do is, we, I know, do that at a level that we consistently have done in years past, so that's basically been my standing, standard protocol that I follow, so I can find out what that is from staff.
You said November 1st?
I can't remember exactly the date, but do I just let you all handle that, and let us know?
We got Jim in here to make sure that we get those follow-up items, Latonya is the one that usually typically coordinates that with URLs, like with Susan and Mary.
Right, okay.
But again, usually when I'm asked those questions, unless there's some unusual circumstance of the direction, is we typically support it, our organizations at the same level we had the previous year.
Okay, now, getting to the training, it's very, very, been rather tedious to figure it out, to find two days together prior to the middle of November, and to coordinate nine schedules, Susan will tell you, and to coordinate the speakers. I will say, by Tuesday, I'll have a more definitive report, we had three possibilities, and one was Daryl Butler, and I have some information from him that I just received as well, and I'll send that out to you all, and he would be bringing an additional person, and all of that's in his proposal, and you can read that, we can discuss it.
Given his interaction with us up to this point, is he bringing a priest?
Okay, now, you don't want to go there, you went on the cruise ship last time, so, so you can see his proposal, the second was Virginia Jacobs, and Ms. Patrika had suggested her, she works with the National School Board Association, et cetera, et cetera, she's a lot of positive things, unfortunately, this morning, about 20 minutes before our meeting, she sent me a text and said she just couldn't make it work, her staff was telling her in the beginning, you can't do this, she says, yes, I can, but as it turned out, the logistics are a little bit too much for her, and she was going to bring an additional trainer as well. Our third person, the only other person that I've gotten on the list that was interested was Joe Mazurkowitz, and he is the chair of the ISOC, right, and I will send you his proposal, and the, he is saying he would do it for no fee, and I will send you his information. So we're basically, at this point, down to two possibilities, I'll send the information out to you, and you can look at it, we can discuss it, you know, possibly at the end of our meeting on Tuesday, because we've got to get it, get it all set. Like I was saying, we cannot find two days back-to-back, so as it's looking now, we have the 8th of October to have the team building piece, and that would include dinner that evening, and the 9th, we can't because of schedules, which would put us to the 10th for the other part of the reorg piece. The, one part about the 10th for the reorg is that Cindy McClung was going to be a part of that as well, and she's not available that day, however, what we're trying to work on is, as well as getting someone from FSBA, or some other affiliation with another board to help us with that, and my dream, just like Martin Luther King, I have one, is that on the 8th, we will leave there after dinner, being so wonderfully in love with each other, that on the Thursday, the 10th, no laughing, on the 10th.
Get on the cruise ship.
We will all be on the same page, and it will be very easy just to go through and do what we have to do. So basically, I'm saying, we had three possibilities, we're down to two, one, there is a fee, one, there is not, one is local, one is not, one has worked with us previously, and there would be two people involved with that, so that's kind of where we are, can I maybe get some discussion?
Ms. Vaughn, did you want to say something?
What's our exact agenda, objective on the 8th?
The 8th was the team building piece.
Okay, and how is Mr. Mazurkowitz, what were his credentials to do, I'm a little hesitant to get somebody local like that, because, well, you know why.
Well, okay, and I will...
I'm just saying, is, does he have credentials as, I mean, I don't know, does he have?
And I will send you his credentials and all of that, so that's why I wanted to get some, at least some feedback from everybody, and I'm, you know, I'm still working on looking for someone.
He's the head of the ISOC?
He's the chair of ISOC.
See, to me, that's a little, the team building, that's a little close to home.
And I have to agree.
That's just my individual opinion.
Nothing personal, but I tend to agree with that, I think it's a little too...
It's nothing against...
Team building.
Nothing against him and his abilities.
It's a little close to home, with the closeness of his working with us, and it's team building, not just a facilitator for our reorganization.
Ms. Morgan?
I'd like to have the conversation after we've had a chance to look at the resumes and the proposals.
I would agree, and may I ask a question, I thought... I thought FSBA was also being contacted to potentially be a facilitator.
Oh, I have tremendously. Well, that's why I said we're working on it. We're trying to get them. And the other option, I'm thinking, since we're looking at the reorg being one day, there's a potential that if there's another day that they could make it, that we might be able to shift the day. Don't let Susan hear this because trying to get nine schedules all together at the same time is not easy. Everybody has stuff going on. So I'm still working with Andrea to see if there is something we can do to have a time with them or if she can suggest someone even from another district that is has skills with that.
No, I'm not talking about the preorg. I'm talking about the 8th. I'm talking about our team building. I thought we were approaching them to see if they were available.
I asked her about both.
Okay, okay.
And there wasn't any possible. There was something that was going on. I can't remember what. I mean, I can ask her again, but I did ask for both. I didn't just ask for one day or the other. And the way it was presented was, you know, either you can do one day or the other day or both days. And so this is kind of what we're down to. I will send you the resumes and the information that has come through. And we'll go from that. And I think the Superintendent, we had talked about working with Marshall Bauer to see if we could get a location. And I believe we were looking at Sanibel.
I thought we got a confirmation.
Yeah, okay, so we confirmed for that. Did you have a question?
Well, this coming Monday, we're attending master board training.
And asking there if there's anything.
Okay, okay.
The schedules are just really tight for everybody.
We may accomplish everything we need to accomplish during that session. We may accomplish what we need to accomplish on Monday.
On Monday? I see that twinkle in your eye.
And then on the 8th, we can go to the lake and get on the raft.
You know what? You need to stop with the raft jumping off in the water. Yes, sir.
With respect to the 8th, I plan to personally attend the board meeting on the 7th and then stay over and attend at your request the board retreat on the 8th. If, however, I it's the 8th is the eve of Yom Kippur. And so I'll be have I will have to leave to go back to Miami at about 3:00.
And that would be fine. We were looking from like 8 to.
Okay. But if you prefer to have someone that's, you know, here through dinner, I, you know, I do have other Chris Saunders does not observe Yom Kippur. So he would be available.
Well, if I mean, it's up to you. If you if I don't think we have preferences to.
No, I think that your attendance that day is much less necessary if FSBA is the facilitator. Like, I don't even think we're still billable with you. So, you know, if FSBA is a facilitator, you don't even have to come out.
Let me know on Monday, the 7th.
Let you know before that because we've got to get this congratulated very soon. Whether any other comments or whatever. So I am hoping to bring this forward on Tuesday. I will get the information to you guys by this evening and let you see everything that they sent to us. And we'll go from there.
My only question is, why are we going to Sanibel?
Because it's free.
The only free place.
No, it's I mean, we were talking about it first, a two-day retreat. And so I think when it got narrowed down to just the one day and the other, the first day, the team building piece, we thought would be nice to do somewhere different, like a real retreat. It's a what?
It's a bank.
The driving there and you looking out at the water.
I would love to be in Sanibel if we were on the water, if we had a. But I'm just saying, it's an inconvenient location. And it would be wonderful if it were in someplace scenic. But how scenic is a bank?
Well, and then consider dinner.
I mean, I'm going to go, but I just had that question. Why we're going to Sanibel. Sorry, you know I question.
The lake is gorgeous.
Well, for and for the sake of time, I will get the information out to you all. You can look at it. Get back to Susan because you can't get back to me. And then I will know and we'll talk about it. Then finally, on Tuesday night. Because Monday, when we go to the FSBA conference, maybe there will be another opportunity as well. I think that was all I had.
Ms. Jordan?
Okay, we had our first EDEC meeting on Monday. We have a lot of new people. Dr. Manaya came in and did a presentation of where we started from last year, where we ended. So they could see actually what took place last year. Everybody was really excited. I think it's going to be a great year. The following day, on Tuesday, we have the Forum at Franklin Park, which we had a nice crowd there. People were asking questions. They were happy to have the presentation and look forward to getting more emails and newsletters from us going forward. And then I'm kind of excited on my strategic plan that I was charged with doing. I'm working with business partner, business partnership liaison or whatever. They gave me a name. But it's working within the schools. Our first school is Success Academy that we're working with to get mentors and just going out and speaking to different partnerships in the community. Everybody wants to be engaged. So I have a slew of people that are going to come in and do presentations to the students of Success Academy and letting them know the different paths that they can take and different trades and just, I mean, we have attorneys, carpenters. We have every walk of life that you can imagine that will be coming in. So I'm really excited about that. And then tomorrow, I'm excited because we're going to, I don't know if I'm excited about it, but I'm going there, the active threat seminar. So I'll be attending that tomorrow as well as the NAACP event tomorrow.
Chris, can I? I forgot one thing. Ms. Fisher mentioned about the SAL. Is that how they pronounce it? The Sheriff's Youth Activity League?
Yes, SAL.
Okay, that we went to. And there were three of us that went to that. It's really a very good organization. They work very closely with our schools, the SROs in our schools. And one of the just to explain, one of the projects is that they're going to have a glass case that they have in the lobby of the school with gifts and things in it of different, you know, little Toshki things or whatever for the kids. And they will get a card. And I'll take a picture and show you what that looks like with like two, two points or three points or whatever. And they can collect them and buy a larger item or they can, you know, get a pencil and eraser or whatever. But the SRO is the only one that has access to it. And the SRO is the one then that connects with the children with that. And they're doing that in the schools. They're always looking for donations. They were telling us when you go to a restaurant, ask for a gift card and, you know, give it to the SRO to go in there. And just different items like that from the community. But that's just one of the things. They do golf tournaments and kickball. In fact, Ms. Patrica is supposed to play.
Dodgeball, not kickball.
Oh, okay, okay.
Dodgeball is much more fun than kickball.
Okay, whichever. But they do a lot of things in the community. The positive thing is creating that relationship with the SRO and the students. Right now, those that project I just mentioned is just in elementary school. And I really look forward to something like that, at least in middle school, because that's where they start to really need to have that connection as well with the SROs. So thank you for letting me mention that.
Sure, thank you. And Ms. Jordan, thank you for your comments. Ms. Vaughn?
At our action meeting, I'll summarize some meetings I've been to. I just wanted to bring up what I what we didn't have time for at the workshop. Just to remind you, I had talked about the fact that in the community, I personally, and I think a lot of people are upset when they see young children on the TV or in the newspaper. Typically, it's on TV. And they've been charged with something. And their name and their picture is all over. And, you know, what it does, what it does to the child. And I know the several of you who went to the that police, what was it?
The law.
Yeah, you said that that was brought up by a community member there. And the police said, what was the reply? I had on a felony that was.
Felony arrests are always public sex.
Even for. And First Amendment and all of that. That said, and, you know, the right of a media outlet to put that picture, you know, legally out there, even though it's legal, I feel like we as a school district recognize what it does, what it can do to those, to those children, the anxiety and the stress and the bullying. And, you know, it could well be that I know a couple of people in the community, and I don't know if this is fact, have said there have been kids that were accused and then they were wrongly accused or whatever. And they still were out there. So I was just wondering if as a board, if if there's any desire just to make a statement about, you know, maybe that would bring some pressure to some of the local news stations. I don't think that Wink does those.
Okay, so I know we're running late. But I also think that this is an issue that's very important to Ms. Vaughn. Can we go through and give comments and give her feedback?
Can we hear from Mr. Bierman? What are?
I'd like I'd like the board's indulgence with extending the meeting before we go there. Do I have the board's indulgence with extending the meeting for this issue?
Sure.
Okay, great. Attorney Bierman?
As I alluded to during the earlier workshop meeting, I, I think that there is a First Amendment issue. But as I mentioned, the media do sometimes impose their own standards, certainly with shielding the names of people who have been victims of sexual assault or have made accusations of sexual assault. And often, you know, respecting the privacy of people who are filing court actions under just initials because they're minors. And so I do think that there is something to be said for asking them to voluntarily refrain. Of course, your jurisdiction is over students within your school system. But I think that the policy would probably cover students that are not enrolled at the county public schools as well if the if the media are willing to adopt that. And so it would certainly be worthy, worthy of your efforts to do that, maybe beginning with a resolution urging action. And then perhaps individually, meeting with the heads of these TV stations to talk to them about it in ways that they can minimize the potential damage that this that you feel that this does.
Dr. Atkins, before we engage in board discussion, is there, do you have the ability or does your staff have the ability to engage in informal discussions with them to determine whether a resolution is even required?
Well, we can certainly do that. I know that Lauren and Communications Department stays in contact with their, you know, their PIOs and their news directors. So we'll do that first. And just for the board's additional information, I know that that it has been a substantial period of time before we were even we have even been contacted relative to pictures. So we, as I indicated before, we have, we don't provide pictures. They typically get them other means. Now, the yearbooks are public documents. If they ask us, we typically talk to them about FERPA and privacy issues. We do know law enforcement has them. And then they also do troll social media. And kids typically post things out there and they'll pull things off of social media as well, so.
So then before we engage in board discussion, can we see if the Superintendent's staff has fruitful conversations? And come to some kind of an agreement?
I'm curious to hear everybody's.
Well, I don't have a point. I don't, okay. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not in favor of supporting posting pictures of minors who have not been convicted of anything.
Ms. Jivana?
I would actually echo that, so I agree.
And I definitely would not agree to the posting. However, listening to the sheriff's statement last night, when he mentioned the felony piece, makes me wonder if there's not on their side some glitch as to how they can do that. And I mean, I don't know if there's because their policies or whatever say if it's a felony, they can do this. I don't know that.
But they're not convicted yet.
Exactly, exactly. And and the fact that one station does, another station doesn't means that there's a discrepancy there. And I would go along with some type of resolution that we would do, suggesting our thoughts and feelings on it. But I, I think it definitely ruins lives, so, yes.
And I personally do not believe that they should put children's pictures up as well, especially if they have not been convicted. But that's just my personal, I don't control what others do.
Ms. Morgan?
I would, I would agree with what Dr. Atkins had to say, which is let's try an informal approach and see if by, you know, just talking with the media, we can find out what the issue is, if there is one. Maybe nobody has said to them that, you know, we're getting feedback. And then if they, you know, if they're not willing to work with us on that, then I think we should do a resolution.
Any other comments?
Mr. Bierman? So isn't there a law that says you can't post pictures or publish pictures of kids under 12?
I don't know about I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I would just my, I will look at that and I'll let you know. But I believe that there is not one because that could run afoul of the First Amendment.
All right, so I think we're comfortable waiting until Dr. Atkins comes back before we take any action. Yes?
Yes.
Well, we'll, and we'll, we'll try to turn around as quickly as possible. We'll reach out Monday at the latest.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully, I have some information for you Tuesday.
Do you have more comments?
I'm willing to hear what Dr. Atkins has to say. My personal belief, and of course, it's just one of seven, is that this would have more traction, more bite, if you will, if it came as a resolution from the board. But whatever everybody feels on it, obviously, that's what's going to occur. So I'm happy to wait until he sees what he, you know, you, you'll be talking to all the media companies. Okay.
Ms. Morgan?
I will add that several media owners are part of the foundation. And there's no reason that the foundation also can't have a role to play. So let's see. The Continuous Systemic Improvement Committee met. They talked about three things that they are interested in pursuing. We had a same thing, refresher, what happened last year. But they put forward a couple of things that they are interested in as a group. They would like to review the district's strategic plan regarding teacher salary and retention. They'd like a presentation on the operation, operating budget and the funding that is available for teacher compensation. They would like.
I'm so sorry, Jason. They would like a follow-up on the security presentation that was done last year and specifically looking at oversight of the safety and security, procedures and policies that were put in place. Essentially, how, how is that followed up? And have we learned anything from the data collected? And the third thing they would like to talk about is proximity zones. We've talked about the fact that that's something that the board or actually staff is.
We've talked about the fact that that's something that the board, or actually, staff is working on, and we have a member of that committee who's very interested in having a presentation about what our work has been thus far. The only other comment that was made, I understand, from Cindy, that there's going to be a TED Talks regarding the district strategic plan at the Collaboratory in March. Didn't we talk about that?
Not technically a TED Talks, but a roll-out of the strategic plan, and we talked about that there will be more details forthcoming as we get that over.
Yeah, so anyway, Cindy talked about that a little bit, and they were very excited about that, because they think that's a much easier and more effective way of communicating. Let's see. I'd like to propose two workshops. We are going to be approving the Aetna Insurance Administration this evening, or Tuesday. And I am reminded, I was reminded that we have been talking for, I'm guessing, five or six years about working with Lee Health and rethinking our relationship with Lee Health, whether there are opportunities to work with them on administration of our plan, clinics, all sorts of things, and we have, for a variety of reasons, not been able to move forward. But I would like, I know there was a member of the CSI committee, he's actually the vice chair of the CSI committee, Brian Resnick, is a former consultant in the industry, and he's a current member of the committee, and he's spoken with Bonnie McFarland and Angela Prueitt regarding a review of the medical plan process using a fresher, more contemporary lens than the one that Aon uses. And so I don't know when the Aon contract is up for renewal, but at some point, I would, I think, within the next 12 to 18 months, I'm not saying tomorrow, I'm just saying I would like to see at some point a conversation about opportunities for Lee Health and the Lee County School District to perhaps partner in a way that makes us more efficient, more effective, and more cost-effective. So, that's one. The other one is, we have a couple of members on this board who have been very outspoken since we first started meeting as a new board about teacher compensation. And the FEA has, or not the FEA, the Talc has come before us at every single meeting talking about mileage. And, oh, she's not here, I was looking for Angela. You've not made, no one on the board has made a proposal about how we would address the issue of increasing teacher compensation, but I would like to have a workshop about it, because I'd like to know where people are on this. I'd like, you know, we've been asked, and there has been no discussion, we know it's on all of our minds, we talk around it, but we don't talk about it. So, I would respectfully request that perhaps by next spring. Again, these are not things that I would like to see tomorrow, but I think that as a board, we have a, well, maybe even before then, because actually, we've been talking about it for a whole year. We have a new board that's been talking about it for a whole year. We've not seen a proposal from any board members, but we need, I think we need to have that conversation. So, that's, I'm throwing that out as something that I would like the board to put on their workshop agenda, perhaps sooner rather than later. And those are my comments this evening, this afternoon.
Can I ask a question, please?
Please.
There was, I don't know if I'm on, Ms. Morgan, was there something else that you mentioned about workshopping earlier?
Just about the insurance.
No, I mean, earlier in the meeting.
Earlier in the meeting.
Yeah, Dr. Atkins already has it, the early childhood education piece, because we were all so, we wanted to dive deeper than, I think staff was prepared to dive today.
Right.
Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Madam Chair, for your work on the facilitation for our "We're Going to Love Each Other" meeting. No, seriously, I know that that, or I can fathom that that's a huge pain, and I appreciate your work on that.
Thanks.
As we were having the FEMA discussion today, Mission Creep was what kept going through my head, and now we have to become experts on FEMA reimbursement, even though we are an education institution. And every time I come across something like that, that takes us away from the mission of educating students, it really, really frustrates me and makes me want to have deeper conversations with our legislators, but I'm not necessarily sure those will go anywhere. Three of us attended the Hispanic Vote meeting last night, and there was significant support in the audience for Sheriff Marcino's discussion surrounding safety in schools and what he's doing, and Dr. Atkins, he must have mentioned your name a dozen times, am I right?
Yes.
How closely he works with you, you know, the open relationship you guys have, your accessibility, his accessibility to you, and how he's helping. You guys are working together to keep our students safe, and there was tremendous support for that in the crowd. Three of us attended the FSBA Legislative Platform adoption meeting. Have you all received a email about that yet?
No, because they're still working.
They're wordsmithing it.
Yes.
There was something that came through this recently.
Was there something that came through? They're wordsmithing it, but, I mean, you know, everything on there is all state issues that all of us would identify as well. So, that was good. Tuesday night, I will be in Washington, DC, and because I'm there for work, I get to call in and participate in the meeting. I just wanted to give you all a heads up that I'll be here via telephone. And I have to express disappointment, because I've only been to, I mean, I've been to some of the schools that were listed for canopies, is that what they're called? Canopy-covered walkways? And Lee High Acres Middle School, I've been there, and they're not on that list. And that makes me sad, because those kids, there's a lot of kids outside, and there's a lot, and I understand that there's reasons for it, and I'm not questioning you or, you know, saying the reasons are bad. I'd just like to have a feel, and I think I've asked this before too, I'd like to have a feel for how those decisions are made, how our schools prioritize for things like that, and to include how our schools prioritize for maintenance things. So, we talked earlier about a measurement being time of approval to time of completion of a project. What about the time of submission of a request to the time of completion of a project? Like, what happens in that step in between? I would just like to have a feel for how those things are...
I usually get burned whenever I don't follow my gut, and my gut was, I was going to ask the same question of you when he was up here, because I was just out at Lee High Acres Middle School with new principal, Brian Gibson, and we were out there looking at the portables, and I feel a little bit let down myself, because I was talking to him and thought, you know, we're going to be able to do something here with all of these portables, and he showed me pictures of kids in the rain and things like that.
He showed me the same pictures.
Yes, actually, I noticed, I think I was following you around the East Zone, I was there a day later, so it looks like Kathy is willing to come up and speak to that, because I do know we had a pretty vigorous discussion in Capitol Committee. I wasn't there till the end of it, when the, you know, the final things were decided, but we talked about leased versus owned, and I expressed some concerns regarding moving portables, if we knew we were going to need portables, you know, moving portables, because the cost, they're $50,000 to move them, and so if we have them in place, and I think, you know, those are things that the team has certainly taken into consideration, so...
The other thing we had talked about was before too, was the, I think Mr. Rickemback mentioned it, after a certain number of years, I think it's three to five years or something like that, that you have to have a cover over it. And I know we've had some at some of the schools in the East Zone for quite longer than that.
Right, that's part of their priority, prioritization, so...
So, I'm going to tease a little bit and say that very soon, we're going to be bringing you a new capital improvement planning process that will do some of what you've just talked about, providing additional measures, additional accountability, and more transparency to how decisions are made for one project versus another, and doing it in a more systematic, thoughtful, and planned way. It is something that Dominic Gemelli in the Planning Department has been working on with me, actually, well before I even started here, he knew of a process I was using in the other district, and...
And let me tease a little bit more, it's really cool. You guys will really like. When she came to interview, it was a document that she provided, and I was like, wow, this is really something that we could use here, so this is exciting to me.
Yeah, it's actually something I've been working on throughout my career as a planner, so, in fact, sitting back there, I'm working on it right now. So, I'm going to tease it, I'm going to tease it at that and just say at a very, I don't think it's at the next briefing, but the briefing after that, we're going to introduce it to you and bring that forward, so that in the future, that questions like this can be more easily answered. In specific to Lee High Middle, there are some challenges on that campus, and one of them is that their portables sit on their athletic facilities, their basketball courts. So, you know, we have trade-offs that we have to make. We picked the five that we did based on a couple of qualifications. One, we evaluated, we don't have an endless budget on it, so we evaluated the cost that it was going to take for campuses to get moved. Secondly, we evaluated whether those facilities in the future would not be needed in those areas because of future campus developments, i.e. the new Lee High Middle School that we're under, that is in current design but about to go under construction, and whether or not those facilities are owned by us or leased by other entities, if we are leasing those portables, or if they're actually physically are portables. So, we, and we also evaluated the number of portables, how long they had been there, what their uses are. So, we did go through a very thorough evaluation of the campuses that we decided, and selected these five. That does not mean that in the next year, you won't see another five to finish, until we get these finished, but specifically to Lee High Middle, we had a challenge with the location of where the portables are and the fact that we are going to be building a new campus very soon, and it is, I mean, these walkways are at a minimum $50,000, but I've seen them even more expensive than that, especially in the current conditions of construction. So, it's not something we just want to do because it's a good idea, we want to do it because it's the right thing to do, and it makes sense for us both short-term and long-term.
A quick question on your process, and I know they hired you just to steal your process, I didn't want to tell you that, but...
I hope that's not the only reason.
No, I'm just teasing. But the process that you have, how can that correlate with the process we have online to show, to track what the half-cent tax is going per school, you know, that app that's out there that says we're doing this, this, and this? How would the two dovetail?
So, the process that we're going to be unveiling, the capital improvement planning process, and it's not the exact same process, it is something that we have tailored to meet the specific needs of Lee County, because any planning process is only good as the community that it's serving. It is going to address three major areas, as when we first started working on it, Dominic and I met with Dr. Atkins and asked him what his kind of priorities were, and so it's going to address long-term, major capital improvement planning processes, so those projects that you normally would see at the end in the capital program, you will, capital budget, you will see much more often throughout the year as you're adopting a capital improvement plan. You will also see, and you will see those large projects broken out in two ways, you'll see them as the capital, your traditional capital programming, those that come from our standard capital dollars, and then those that come from the half-penny sales tax. So, people will be able to see where their half-penny sales tax dollars are going to and how they're being utilized. And then there'll also be a determination of small projects, so those will be projects less than $200,000, large capital projects will be over $200,000. So, you will see these projects in a number of ways, and you'll be able to chime in and evaluate those projects a lot earlier and a lot more often than you do now. You'll be asked for your priorities for our projects as we do the evaluation of projects. You'll be asked for your consensus on goals that will, so the process will start with the goals, that's actually what I'm working on in the back there, and then we'll go into your prioritization, then we will go into specific project evaluation, then we will go into a determination of how projects fit into a five-year capital plan, and then finally, you will adopt it. So, you will see it six times probably before you finally adopt it. It'll be, you'll see a lot more of Dominic than you've ever seen in the past.
Thank you so much.
Which is a good thing, because a lot of Dominic is a good thing.
It is. Thank you so much for your...
Not even three months yet, I'll be three months...
And randomly, Lambs comes up, and you're able to, from memory, describe the campus, the challenges that we have there, the process that you went through in determining they're not one of the five. Very, very impressive. Good job.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to work here.
Good. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that completes my comments for the afternoon, and let me get back to our agenda. Dr. Atkins, I'm sorry, I was going to call you by the wrong last name, Attorney Bearman.
I don't have any further comments today.
Dr. Atkins?
Just a couple of quick things to answer some questions. First of all, a question came up regarding the quality of life. We typically purchase four seats at a cost of $1,000. That's been what we have done in the past, so like last year, we bought four tickets at $1,000 for that particular event. The question came up from Ms. Morgan regarding talks with Lee Health. We did have, the chiefs had a presentation last week about cost of insurance and some of the things we can do to mitigate those costs. One of the things that we did was we projected our cost relative to national trend, and came to the very quick conclusion that there, it's just, we're not able, obviously, to keep up with what the current trend is in terms of continuing to add more to the district contribution, you know, because it would go upwards of $15,000, you know, very, very quickly. We do have a little bit room in terms of what we could provide relative to being within the comparable range. We could increase a little bit, which has been the case in the past. So, one of the things that was discussed was a partnership, that partnership with Lee Health, and the group has already been in conversation with them. So, we will provide an update to the board in the very, very near future. I think I might have mentioned Dr. Antonucci, and I have had some brief conversations about the same thing. You know, we, both of us look, we're looking desperately for ways to really cut costs to try to maintain the quality of healthcare for our employees, but still be able to give the pay raises and things like that to keep pace with other things. You know, Consumer Price Index, it continues to go up, so it's not just medical, but medical is obviously going up much faster than, you know, just the cost of the CPI, so...
All right, the next item on the agenda is Good to the Order, and I did have an item to bring up for Good to the Order, but I feel like I can bring it up at another meeting before Hispanic Heritage Month is completed, and given the length that we've gone to today, I'm pretty brain-dead, and so I'll bring it up at the next opportunity we have, if that's okay. I sent everybody an email about saying I would bring it up today, I'd rather wait, so that we can have a robust discussion. I don't think we can be very robust right now.
My row is busted.
Your row is busted. All right, fantastic. Seeing no other business, I will wait for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.